Done and get it over with.
The math right now as we speak.
Ready? I'll wait for. Mike. He did. Like a just. That's, I mean, nobody, nobody better than that flies. All right, Mike, you ready?
I am ready.
All right, we're ready. All right, Elise, let's go.
I'm running my math.
Hey. You're ready. Go ahead.
All right, so let's call to order the, uh, uh, town commission work session for, uh, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four on the, um, fiscal year budget, uh, for twenty four, twenty five. You have your role call, I think.
Not yet. Oh, I mean, I can. Commissioner McMullen.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Eric.
Eric. You need a minute?
No, I'm good. Sorry.
All right, Andy. I'm on you, Paul.
All right, yeah.
And if everybody could just remember to speak loudly and clearly, the audience, um, seems to have a hard time hearing people still.
Good evening, um, we're here to, this evening to, uh, go over the proposed, uh, two thousand twenty four, twenty five fiscal year budget for the town of Oakland, Florida. Um, hundred and thirty seven years ago, just a little history fact, uh, meeting was called to incorporate the town with thirty one qualified voters, uh, listed, and of course, Peter Demmons was listed as the mayor. So if you can see what we are today, how far we've come, uh, since the town was incorporated in eighteen eighty seven, and, and, uh, this budget will, will move us forward, um, into the future, and it provides a, uh, well-sounded financial plan for the town as we look forward to the next fiscal year. Honorable mayor, members of the town commission, residents of the town of Oakland, Florida, it is a great pleasure that I present to you and our community the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five annual town budget and five-year capital improvement plan for the town of Oakland, Florida. The budget is presented using the highest principles of governmental budgeting in accordance with the Government Finance Officers Association, along with the requirements set forth by the state of Florida. Uh, this is the second budget that I have prepared since having the honor to become the town manager in June of twenty twenty three, and have been able to experience a full year of town operations. The budget proposes no increase to the town's existing millage rate of six point three mills, and projects total revenues at nine point one million. The budget was prepared using conservative revenue projections, using data from the state of Florida, Orange County, and analyzing historical data from previous fiscal years. During the budget process, uh, town department directors focused on maintaining and exceeding existing service level within all town departments, while diligently working to prioritize expenditures within the confines of the town's operating budget. The town of Oakland's population has grown from thirty five hundred and sixteen residents to fifty four hundred and two residents between year twenty twenty and twenty twenty three, which represents a fifty fourth percent increase in population. The rapid growth, along with continuing growth for foreseeable future, has placed a significant demand on all town services as well as the town workforce. In twenty twenty, the town employed fifty two full-time and part-time employees, and the proposed fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget funds fifty full and part-time employees. So as you can see, the population has gone up by over fifty percent, and our workforce has actually been reduced by four, two full-time employees. Um, while the number of residents served by town employees has increased exponentially, the number of employees has been reduced. This fact alone is a testament to the level of commitment and hard work and dedication town employees display daily. It goes without being said that this budget is focused around providing the town's greatest assets, employees the resources and tools necessary to continue moving the town of Oakland forward as the town continues to grow at a rapid pace. Financially, the town of Oakland remains in a stable financial condition in both general and enterprise fund, with fund balances remaining untouched in the proposed budget, and the town continuing to experience a consistent increase in property values year after year. However, even with the consistent increase in revenues generated from residential construction and increasing property value, expenses due to inflation and demand on existing services due to this growth is absorbing, um, a large percentage of these revenue increases each year. The proposed budget is fully capable of funding the essential costs of doing business. However, there is little yearly operating revenue remaining after expenses for large capital expenditures identified in the town's five-year capital improvement plan. Funding for projects with yearly operating revenues in both the general and enterprise fund remains a challenge in the proposed budget. Um, this is common for small towns, um, but the town remains well-positioned for an influx of revenue with new commercial growth along State Road Fifty and other vacant commercial, commercially zoned properties. The town's commercial property values make up approximately eighteen percent of the total ad valorem revenue for the town as commercial developments occur. Um, in the future, this additional tax revenue will shift a portion of the tax burden from the residents and on to the commercial developments. This additional tax revenues will assist the town with not only providing more robust services in the future, but also provide the revenue necessary to begin funding more capital improvements. Increased growth of public utility revenues because of more commercial development also helps spread the service delivery cost of utilities for our residents over a larger customer base. The proposed annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five is hereby submitted to the town commission for approval. And with that being said, um, I would like to just really put a focus on the hard work and dedication um, of our town employees. Um, if you, the town is, uh, has, has, has experienced, I think we're kind of in between, and we've experienced a rapid growth, as you can see, um, over the past ten years. The town, I feel, is well-positioned financially, um, to, uh, continue to grow the town, and I believe, uh, town is in a good financial position moving forward. Uh, this budget does fund all the, all the necessary expenditures to maintain and run the town. It does have a good mix of, uh, smaller type projects. The town has been phenomenal in the past. Uh, our department heads have receiving grants for things. Um, it's obvious that this town has not grown from general fund revenues, it's grown from grant funding, it's grown from the hard work of our, our employees and their dedication to the town of Oakland. And so, um, I really felt it, uh, appropriate, um, to, to sort of dedicate, uh, this budget, particularly this year, to, to our town employees and recognize them for their hard work and dedication.
Thank you, guys.
Um, what I'll do now, um, before I turn it back over to the mayor, if, if, uh, each commission has seen a copy of the, uh, proposed budget, there's copies here that our, our assistant town manager has put out, uh, for the general public, if anybody would like to see the more detailed budget. Um, but what I'd like to do is kind of give an overview, uh, of, of, of the twenty twenty four budget, uh, and kind of talk about some of the highlights within the budget and some of the major points. We're not going to get into the details of each individual line item. Um, each department, as you know, um, has proposed a budget, uh, to myself, and, and we've gone through in the budget, and worked to balance the budget, we've had to make cuts in some areas. Um, but we've also, which is typical for any, any municipality, is there's always more requests than there are, uh, available funds each year. So our department heads have worked hard, and so I kind of want to go over some of the, uh, highlights of the budget. Um, so tonight, we'll just present this, uh, presentation, and I'll turn it back to the mayor, um, and then I'll let the mayor take it from there, have any discussions amongst the town commission, and then if you'd like to open it up to any questions from the residents, um, that's kind of what we'll do. We only have an hour, so I'll try to make this presentation as short as I can. Next slide. Uh, sort of the outline of tonight's budget. We're going to talk about some of the budget principles. I'll tell, I'll, I'll bring the commission, um, up to speed on the town's general fund, which is the operating fund, which funds the day-to-day services of the town. We'll talk about the employees, employee pay and benefits, uh, that were budgeted in the proposed budget. We'll go on and talk about the enterprise fund, which is the business fund for the town, which accounts for our water, sewer, and solid waste, uh, activities that the town participates in. Then we'll talk a little bit about impact fees. The town does collect impact fees from new developments. Um, and so we do have funds set aside and, and in reserve accounts, uh, that are able to be spent on eligible projects as it relates to growth, and so we have an impact fee budget. And then we'll talk about, uh, the millage rate and setting our public hearing dates. Um, and then, as you know, last year, the town commission adopted a five-year capital improvements program, which accounts for larger capital expenditures over five thousand dollars. Um, previously, before, um, I was manager, um, there was a lot of, of projects that were out there, but they were never anywhere in writing to keep track of, and so as we had recommendations from our residents, we'll add these into the plan and allow us to, it's a good tool to keep track of those larger expenditures, and it's a good five-year planning tool for the town. Um, and then we'll go over some of the requested action that we're requesting here this evening. Um, some budget principles real quick. I'll give you analysis of the millage rate, salaries and benefits, uh, talk about some of the reserves, and then we'll talk about, uh, positioning for growth. So just as a, the main fund for the town is the general fund. Uh, this fund accounts for, uh, the services that don't generate revenue, such as your streets, your parks, uh, your maintenance, your lawn cutting, public works employees, your police department, your fire department, your public safety, uh, the town clerk, the administration, everything that it takes to run a community, um, is what is captured as, uh, in, in our general fund. So the general fund for this year totaled nine million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, property values, just for a snapshot, property values increased from last year to this year by ten percent. So that ten percent includes new development that came on in Oakland Park and other newer, uh, newer developments, residential developments that we have occurring in town, and it also captures the cost of the property assessment when they come out and assess your property. Probably has gone up, uh, since last year. So the overall increase to the town's assessed value is ten, it's gone ten percent. Um, our budget was based on a millage rate of six point three mills, as I stated before, same as last year. Um, and then the general fund balance, or the projection that we'll have in our town bank account, which is, uh, which is what we call the general fund balance, uh, basically in reserves, will be, is about two point one million dollars. And that was just, was a, is a, a number, a new number that came out today as a result of our last year's audit being completed, actually as of today. Uh, so the town has a healthy fund, fund balance. Um, and then the audit presentation, you'll see that will verify this number will take place in August for last year. So let me talk a little bit about the millage rate, um, of the town. This is a ten-year snapshot of the, as a millage rate, um, as, as, as the town continued to grow, the town has been able to reduce the millage rate, um, just like anything else. Uh, services cost money, uh, and the quality of those services costs money as well. Um, but the town has done a good job over the past year, um, of, since twenty sixteen has taken the millage rate from six point seven five down to six point three, and the town has been able to be, hold consistent with that six point three millage rate, uh, since twenty twenty three, as you can see here in this graph. Some of the highlights on the general fund, um, some of the revenues, uh, of course, the largest revenue source for the town is property tax. So as the last slide, that went up about ten percent. Um, in the fiscal year budget, the town budgeted about eight, seven to eight percent in the budget, just because we like to budget conservatively, um, our revenues conservatively, uh, in the budget, in case these, some of these revenues are not collected throughout the year. Um, so our budget does reflect a seven percent increase in the ad valorem tax as of right now. As you get to more to the final budget, and we get the, uh, some more, uh, solid numbers that come out from the property praiser, we may increase that revenue amount. So if you look in the general fund revenues, you'll see all the revenues, uh, that the town collects, from sales tax to property tax to franchise fees, to the asset sale tax, now receives a portion of, the building permit fees, all the fees and revenues that the town collects is accounted for in the revenue section. There were not very many changes outside of the increase in ad valorem revenue for the town, uh, with the exception of, uh, an increase to the building permit fee revenue of eighty-five thousand. Um, the reason for this being is the town is going to be looking at their, their building, building permit fees, uh, that were reduced actually in twenty twenty-two, uh, and since that time, it is, it has actually cost the town, uh, over the past year, a little money, some money to, uh, provide this building department services for the town. So we're looking at increasing those fees so that department pays for itself, mainly paid for by new development. So, um, I think you'll see that being a positive source and of revenue for the town. Some of the highlights in the general fund, these are just the main highlights throughout each department. I didn't want to get into too detailed, being that we don't have that much time, but I wanted to point out those expenditures that are outside the day-to-day expenses, um, that you typically see important, the town has to pay for utility bills, the town has to pay for copier machines, and I didn't want to get into, uh, that level of detail, so I kind of just pulled out the, the major expenditures, some things that may have changed from last year. Um, one of the things that I've heard the town commission, um, be an advocate for is, uh, kind of chasing after some additional grants for the town. Um, as I said before, uh, the town is, is the backbone of this town, has been built on, on grants. However, um, as we continue to grow, there's more grant opportunities, is, 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 and, and more need for, uh, possibly somebody to give a little bit more focus and detail, uh, to grant writing for the town. Possibly leverage some of our other impact fees and, and fees in our reserves, um, to possibly go after some of that free money that, that is available to the state and federal government. Um, and one of the major expenses that we'll have for this year is we have to budget, uh, we're, we're going to a serverless, uh, IT, right now, we have a, uh, server room in our, our town hall, and, and as you know, technology has, has moved, uh, to places we've never expected, and so we're looking to take everything and move that into the cloud. And in order to do that, um, it'll cost the, our, our information technology, um, consultant said it would cost about sixty thousand dollars to do that, so we budgeted for that. Uh, we're looking to do some upgrades in this commission room. We hear a lot of complaints about not being able to hear during commission meetings, uh, possibly looking at doing a different setup for the town commission, uh, with the AVs and the microphones, and so we, we can all participate in the meetings, um, and that, of course, we're looking at that cost to be around twenty thousand dollars, as well as, you know, that our meetings have gone virtual to every, every meeting. We, we try to allow the general public that's not able to make it to the meetings to be a part of that. So we're looking to make some upgrades there. Um, a large reduction is in finance and administration and the compensation line item. Um, we have done some, uh, let's see, combining of positions, if you will. The town had a human resources position, uh, at one point. We've combined that with the payroll specialist that's taken over the duties as the HR, um, and then, uh, Gabby has been promoted to the finance director, so her position, um, as it now remains vacant. So this is a savings of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the town. Um, we'll analyze this as, as things move forward, um, throughout the year. Um, and there is going to be a need, as you know, as the town continues to grow, to, to increase some of the staffing to meet the needs of the residents. Um, but for now, we thought we could combine some positions and save the town a little money moving in, into this fiscal year. Uh, we funded fifty thousand dollars for dirt road maintenance, you know, as, as we, we hear most of our meetings here recently. Uh, dust has been a problem with our dirt roads in town, and so the commission is looking at various options to hopefully, hopefully address that, and this is sort of some starter money in the budget to do so when, when we do come up with some sort of solution. There's a seventy-five thousand dollar budget for road paving, um, you know, all these streets that are owned, owned and maintained by the town, uh, will eventually have to be repaid, uh, so whether or not we repay this year, this seventy-five thousand is intended to be, uh, as a reserve to begin establishing a fund so that, that money is available where these streets need to be repaid. Um, if there's a street that needs to be repaid next year, then we've got available funds to do that. Uh, and then the, uh, general fund funds one additional police officer, which is, which is much needed. We have a high, you know, we have a turnaround, and we've received, most recently, it's been fairly stable, but, um, we do have a, a, a turnover in our police force every once in a while, and an officer wants to go to a larger agency, or goes because of pay, or whatever the reason the case may be. But we put a lot of resources and training into our police officer, um, and it costs quite a bit of money to, uh, to, uh, give them uniforms and all the training that's required to, to be an Oakland police officer. And so, uh, we added additional, uh, positions, so if there's a vacancy, that full-time position can fill in, and we, and we maintain an adequately staffed department. Employee salaries and benefits, this is the largest, this is the largest expenditure in the town budget. It's that way across all municipalities and all cities is, is the payroll, uh, for the town. Uh, the town has budgeted a four percent cost of living adjustment, and that's based off of the CIP, um, for April, as of April twenty twenty-four, which is three point four percent for all items. Um, an additional two percent to sworn law enforcement officers retirement plan. We are a small town, we're trying to get closer to some of our surrounding agencies as far as benefits, because that is a big way to keep our, our officers, uh, and our employees, is to try to get as close as we can to some of our surrounding municipalities, because there is a high cost of, when you lose an employee, and especially in law enforcement. So we're looking to do an additional two percent into the retirement plan. Uh, and most agencies have a, for law enforcement, you know, have a vested retirement plan where they, they work twenty years and they're out. The way we do it here is it's, it's a four fifty-seven contribution, so it's a one-time expense, and the town isn't on the, on the hook for any long-term expense to do a pension plan. So we fund it as we go. Um, the town is continuing to fund a hundred percent of the employee health insurance. We estimate that being a five to eight percent increase this year. Um, that is a, a benefit, uh, to our employees, and we'll continue to try to fund a hundred percent as long as we're able to afford, like everything else that has gone up, as long as we're able to afford these premium increases. Um, the town has budgeted in this budget a fifty thousand dollar contingency. Um, the town last year, um, is, has conducted, is in the process of conducting a compensation study, so we know where we're at, market-wise, with our employees. Um, so where we, if there's anything that comes out of this salary study where we need to make some immediate adjustments, um, to maybe some of our employees as a result of this, uh, there's some funds available in this year's budget. The town commission plans to get that back in October. So you'll, that gives a little bit of leeway if there are adjustments that need to be made. Um, but it's always good to know what your market is, where you're at, and, and work the best that we can, um, to keep up with that within our workforce. Uh, the other fund that we have, we have two funds, like I said, that was a general fund, I was talking about the utility fund. This is what we call, also known as the enterprise fund, and this houses our water, wastewater, and solid waste, um, departments. The total utility fund budget is about eight point six million. Uh, water department makes up five point nine million of that, and solid waste makes up three hundred and sixty thousand, uh, which is our garbage. And then wastewater department, uh, brings in about two point three million dollars, so a total budget of eight point six. Our utility fund balance that we project as we move into the next fiscal year will be about one point two million dollars. Um, and combined, um, it's around four million dollars of what the town has between the general fund and the utility fund and the town reserves, better known as your town savings account. Uh, the utility fund water, just real quick, some of the revenues that you see in our utility fund, the one million dollar grant for our alternative water project, town received a state appropriation in twenty twenty-three of two million dollars. And, uh, the public works director was able to obtain another two million dollars from FDEP grant funding. So if you look at alone, that there is four million dollars, and if you look at the total yearly budget for the utility fund is eight point six. So, uh, you know, that is, that is, that is huge, uh, when you look at the, uh, the amount of grant funding that we're going to receive for that project and what the town has received. And, and this, this goes on for other utility projects, uh, within the town over the years. Um, some of the expenditures in the utility fund, you'll see it, the consumptive use permit, thousand dollars. Uh, we have to do permitting, and it requires an engineer, uh, to look at, uh, the water usage. The town's only allowed to pump a certain amount of water out of the ground that are part of our, that are our water plant. Uh, and so as developments occur, um, we're only allowed a certain amount, and so we have to go back and do these studies that show, uh, to increase the, the pump, to increase more water, we'll have to go in and show that it's not going to have any negative impact on, on, or the types of things. And believe it or not, there's, these aren't cheap, but they require in order to get, uh, renewed permits. Uh, we have to come in and install new water meters. We have older water meter system in town. Um, with the technology that is, that's, that's available today, you no longer have to go and read the meters in the ground. You just have to hire employees to go out and read each individual meter. Um, now we have a, a antenna that sits on top of our water tower that reads the manually or electronically, uh, with the punch of a button, and so we're, we need to upgrade some of the outdated water meters. And so, uh, this is an expense that as we go, we try to fund as many new water meters as possible each year out of the operating budget. And then, of course, we have the alternative water project of four million dollars, um, funded in the budget. Uh, the wastewater, the sewer, uh, part of the budget, uh, and the revenues, uh, we were notified that the town did not, uh, that the governor vetoed the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar request, uh, for a septic sewer project that would have tied in the town hall facilities here and seventeen other residential properties. Um, however, we are going to look for other avenues to FDEP. Mike Parker's already, uh, has contacted FDEP to submit for grant funding, uh, as requested by the governor to do so. Um, so that will be removed from the budget when you see that come back before the commission, September. Uh, and then you'll see the lift station number seven, uh, is budgeted for, and that is on tonight's commission agenda to approve the contract for that, and so that needs to be budgeted. And by the time that gets going, it will be probably after October. Uh, real quick, impact fee budget, uh, this. On the impact fee budget, the town receives funds from new developments, for water, wastewater, recreation, law enforcement, transportation, fire protection, so as, as, as the house is built in town, the developers come in and bring these impact fees. Town's currently reviewing our impact fees to make sure we are where we need to be with charging new developments for impact fees. Um, but the town banks these, has banked these fees over the years, and so this budget points out what the town's intentions are to spend some of these funds, um, in our impact fees. Uh, and we can go through, this helps fund some new projects as well. Um, I can, I'm not going to, for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through each one, but any expense that takes place has to be into this category, and it has to be the expense that, if the town is able to spend these monies, it has to be due, we have to show that it's due to growth, and, and, and we need to, uh, we can't just spend this money on salaries and, and have towards projects and, and structure to help offset the impact of growth in the town, uh, which is paid for by, like I said, the developers. So as we move, uh, to the budget work session and, and, and conclude our budget work session here, uh, just a couple of things. The budget was prepared using a six point three millage rate, as I said before. It's important that we know that that has not increased. Um, the next, uh, the, the town, unless there's another budget work session between our meeting now, our public hearing will be on Monday, September ninth, uh, at six P M. And Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at six P M. Is that correct? Did we set the time wrong?
No, six P M.
Six P M. Last thing, so, so that kind of wraps up our, our general fund, our utility fund and our CIP, or not our CIP, but our impact fee budget. The next thing that the town adopts as part of the budget process, when we started to adopt last year, was this five-year CIP. You'll have a copy of that in your packets as well. What this does is identify the projects within the departments, that, uh, that we're looking, that we need over, over the next five years, and it's a planning tool. Um, but if you'll see, go back to the general fund. I've already discussed a lot of these expenditures here, and as you see here, the town AV, all these larger type items, you'll find them in CIP. It's, it's capital projects over five thousand, and so those made its way from the CIP into the budget. Other projects may have to be pushed out depending on a funding's available, but they always stay within that five-year, uh, five-year plan. Um, some of the capital improvement projects that you see that haven't been discussed yet, um, are things in the utility fund budget, such as uptime, we will one-on-one repeat it on Golly Avenue, um, and then purchase of wastewater pumps and then utility cranes, so we can pull up our, our wastewater pumps out of, out of the lift station when we repair. Um, and then if you see here, of course, we would have to include the lift station number seven, which is a lower capital purchase, and those are all things that are filed within the CIP. Um, so that is all I really have. Uh, last slide just talks about the town. We intend to submit a millage rate that will go out on the resident's trim notice. The property praiser will send out a tax notice, but so the town anticipates to, uh, to charge a six point three millage rate, that'll be your, your, your millage levy for the year, uh, and that goes out in the notice. And so we're able to balance the budget on that six point three mill, so I don't see a need for any type of property tax increase at this time. As I said before, um, there is not a lot of, after we budget for our expenses and some of these much-needed projects, uh, some of these much-needed capital improvements for the year, uh, there's about a sixty thousand dollar contingency left over, and that's sort of like, uh, put in the budget in case we have an overdue or a shortfall. So with that being said, I'll turn it over back to the mayor, um, I'll stand for any questions. The department head, we some of the department. Um, I'll stand for any questions, the department had raised some of the departments here this evening. Uh, and uh, answer any questions you may have in regards specifics of the budget and we'll take it from there.
All right, thanks, Andy. And again, thanks staff for your hard work and dedication to uh the town residents and and the town. So, um, all right, we'll bring it back here to you guys. I'm sure everybody had a chance to take a look at it uh in depth or not in depth, but in any anybody want to start off? Any questions?
Got a few comments, just again, not to uh. Well, echoing the mayor that the staff have been doing an extraordinary job. Extraordinary job, I mean, this is a lean operation, right? The way it's running. And just to see where we came from, I'm looking at the the taxable property value history and I was studying that. You know, from twenty ten to twenty twenty, we we made it. I have, I wasn't here in twenty ten in the committee, you know, part of the commission board. But I know Mike, Joseph and Rick were here and you guys saw it wasn't three hundred and ninety million dollars of property value. Now we're at eight hundred and thirty seven million. That's a hundred and twenty percent increase. In uh, in four years. And you guys are running this town, the I mean, the staff with two less employees, this is. I mean, I I want to give you guys another hand of applause, this is great, awesome job. Now, as I was studying that, I was looking at some of the future taxable value. That property that we have coming in, I wrote this up. And this is just a handful of the projects that we already approved. There are either halfway approved, already working in what the town will have between now and twenty thirty. I have added up to another seven hundred million dollars worth of taxable property. I made some copies here for you guys, if you guys want. This is just a spitball. Conservative, but the value will be after they're done, if you guys want to see this. And. Kudos to you guys, really, great job.
Our job is to sort of like there isn't getting the in and we appreciate it. We appreciate it all the support and information.
I can uh, Joseph and Shane. So far, yes.
Um, I'd just like to bring up something. I've had heard a few conversations with Andy. Um, about our uh building inspection fees and uh. Back in two thousand twenty two, when Jack Butler was interim town manager, he reduced our fees to less than half than what they currently are. And then we did a switch from P D C S to Willban. And since we made that changes, we've. Uh, we're we're solving sizable losses. Uh, Ben asking Andy, can we do something about this? And he did let me know that the state did freeze permit fees. We can't raise the fees until October. So he did get with Willband, they're going to do a uh fee study. Find out what other municipalities around us are charging so we can get that fixed. But I think that's something we need to fix as soon as we can because the losses are may as substantial. Another thing with this Willban, you know, we used to be able to go on a computer. You can pull up and see permits like on your house and your neighbor's house. We don't have that anymore. Andy did tell me that uh Willdan is working on that also, so hopefully we'll get that fixed in the future. I don't know if you got anything to add on to that, Andy?
No, uh, uh, as of now, I mean, the 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 goal, the plan was to try to stay with the same contractor. We're able uh, look at kind of trying to look back at the history and figure out where the issue was as to not collecting the revenues that we once did. Um, and that what I'm being told and what I can see is it's a result of the reduction to the building permit fees. For whatever reason, when we changed this company, but I think that had to do with the previous administration. Um, from what I can see. And so as as we go into do a studies, um, it will help us justify our fees based on the town's costs. Because as you said, the the residents shouldn't did not pay for. New development, building fees, and 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 I think it's just an issue that can be easily corrected. And I believe the town with the next several years, their good years like we've had in the past, would start generating a profit. To to offset maybe the doubt, the times that things are not as good in the building department. So you'll, I'll be presenting a study, uh, the town attorney is currently looking at the proposal. For both the software licensing agreement that they were wanting to propose. And then also the building impact fees, the I'm sorry, the building permit fee study that I plan to bring before commission. Because that we can, we can adopt those rates on October first of twenty twenty four. And uh, so we need to go and get that set in place, but we can adopt them any sooner or we would already have done that.
And since we have a lot of development coming on board to grow in Riley Farm, it's sure to be nice to get that fixed. Before they get cranked up.
Yeah, I I agree with you. It's for this, I would feel jump on it as quick as possible with that. I mean, as far as the residential side and if the residential development, you know, completes in five years or so. You know, and we got tuned to commercial, so that's a totally different fee structure that you have there that we need to look at as well. So not only on the residential side, but on the commercial side's fee structure. Um, the other one, when I was looking through the um department memos, I was looking through public works. And one of the things um I was circled here was the uh twenty five hundred dollar connection fees for water. Um, Mike, I didn't know if that was sufficient or if that's got to be looked at as well. As well as, you know, any type of impact or impact fee connection from sewer uh that comes in. So uh, you know, I we I want to look at that as well, make sure we're, you know, in line or or above line where we need to be maybe for that. And um. That's the only thing I really had on the public works. I didn't know if we else had anything on public works or each department. I know you had some resurfacing on here, Mike, was there specific streets or is just?
Uh, well, going back to your earlier question about the impact fees. We have been in touch with the Ractals who has historically done our impact fee. Um, you know, our studies and most of our impact fees have been in a three to five year range of being completed last or looked at last. So they have, they have already started that as well as transportation and utility fees at this. Yeah, but um, and then the other question, um, the streets that we had in mind were um Mill Holland, Vandermeer. And uh, Demons, which is uh, the the Mill Holland shows the worst wear. Um, there is a pavement assessment program that that we could be using. We're not, but we could be using it uh that will break it down into the street segments. And actually brand each segment, one to ten, so that would give us a better idea. So I've looked into that, uh, you know, for the future, we may do it that way. But right now it's basically the appearance of streets.
Right.
Side brings up a a close second.
And and God bless you, man, the department uh the way you do with the budget that you got and. The services that you uh are providing there. So uh, again, thanks, thanks, Mike, for for that. Um, and if you guys want to go down the each department or if you guys have or you just want to go around the table real quick. I I got comments for each department I wrote down. Joseph, did you have anything?
All right. You finished, Rick? Were you finished? Um, I'm I'm real quick with my the salary assessment. We're gonna be looking at F T's as F T E's as well or just the salary?
Uh, like.
Yeah, uh, yeah, sorry, yeah. So we've been looking at.
Yeah, we're looking at more of the local area and market.
So we're gonna be looking at.
All of it, oh, like benefits and everything?
No, we're gonna be looking at, uh, are we adequate, are we staff adequate as well?
Oh, yeah.
Was it just the salaries?
Just the salaries, yeah.
Yeah, but I feel we need to look at staff adequacy as well. Along with that, because, you know, Mike's not gonna, you know, I hate to say it, but Mike's not gonna be here, you know, forever. And 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 the things, you know, that Mary just mentioned. I mean, Mike has been a godsend, you know, like I've mentioned before, I go other places and they know Mike and saying they are just excited. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we are being prepared for the future. Because, you know, you know, like Commissioner Ramos discussed, I've grown. In the last decades, this has been tremendous. And of course, we're not, we can't, we don't, you know, God is not making any more land. It's going to be, it's going to come to a capacity, but I want to make sure that we prepare.
We can put together.
Even with the police department, as we continue to grow. Uh, so I just hope, you know, we have a full comprehensive. Uh, because I concerned about you guys, because you are working hard. I remember when Mr. Dennis came on board and he really put this structure together, department heads. And and making sure people, you know, are are working in different departments to create the structure that we have now. And it's showing us for, you know, um, the fruition, you know, it's it's showing what we look forward to uh to produce. But I think we have a capacity, I think we need to make sure we look at that. I'm very pleased by the grant writer. I've been talking about bringing us a grant writer for 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 years and years and years. I'm just happy that we do have that because, you know, as we've talked about. Uh, there's millions and millions of dollars that we can come on board to help. And we already see what has happened with some of the things that Mike has done. So I'm glad we we have that resource. I even tried to pluck somebody from O A C S one time to help write this, you know, the only thing we have with efforts. You know, pass the free grant, so we definitely need that. So I'm pleased with the process. Real concerned about making sure that we don't run you guys away or lose staff or lose police because of our salary. It's not where it should be. And I always want to make sure we get to where we need to be sooner than later. So thank you for what we got. Appreciate everything you guys do.
Is is that you being quick?
Yeah, I had three, I had two points, only had. I only had two points, I had three, but I counted it. Put them together with a settlement fee, but thank you.
And uh, most uh, my questions were pretty well answered by Andy, you know, earlier today. I'm very pleased with what we've gotten in it and where we go. The only real question I have and we're going to look into it is what we bounce between the the school. And the town with the budget and, you know, what the eighty one thousand, what what's that for that we pay? There are some things that we do need in school also, just want to make sure it's fair all the way around that we go with that. But that doesn't have to be talked about here right now, we can work on that. School budget comes later, right? Tonight, that discussion tonight, later tonight? And anybody has to be approved within a dollar. So we, yeah, for you, it it can change. October usually does.
So we normally just adopt the old budget and then roll over.
We do the school budget, we normally do that because we don't have the final numbers yet from uh, from the state for the for the funding. It's it's. Since you do a budget. That's it. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna spend, we got a few minutes left here, I'll spend the next few minutes, I'm just gonna go through your department. Department number seven, a couple of notes, I read, uh, a certain um. Media outreach, um, and looking at the town events that were there. How much is that possible in our work areas? Um, and 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 I'm I'm gonna get this, so I'm gonna get the new guy. As far as different lens, maybe he has the fresh set of eyes maybe on the thing. So I'm going to ask some questions and 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 uh, again, Andy, if you want to try to research those and find out. And then um, uh, get back to us or maybe it all knows. Uh, one of the things I run vessels and events, uh, you know, Santa's Lane is a great one, Heritage Day celebration, music under the oats as well. But when you break it down to what uh, we're spending on some of these and the attendance that goes to 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 these events. Um, for example, Santa's Lane, we spend ninety five hundred dollars. There's two thousand people at tennis, about four dollars and seventy five cents a person. Uh, Heritage Day, fourteen thousand five, there's three thousand people that attend that as four dollars and eighty three cents a person. And then Celebration Among Oats, which is the uh Easter egg drop, which I know there's partnerships inside those with the Lakeside Church that helps contribute stuff. Um, that's a big event and that's a dollar ninety. And then Music Under the Oaks, um, we spent ten thousand six hundred, that's twenty one dollars and twenty cents a person. There's five hundred people that attended. So uh, you know, do we look at that and 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 see if there's reallocations that need to to happen there? Um, and then. Let me make sure I got nothing else on there, but that was that one. Uh, finance. Uh, health insurance, I know that uh, I believe Fort League of Cities is our health insurance uh provider. Does that health insurance, does anybody know if they get shopped out at all every year just to see if there's any savings out there?
And also time reductions.
Great, okay, so you do shop that out, okay?
Yes. Probably.
Yeah. So that's then you every year just because of the. You you make change.
They'll provide.
Boy, they gotta go on cars. Understood. Um, and then also you have some asset replacements, I think on the computer services and stuff. And and I think last I heard of maybe time for some change out of equipment, is that happening? Um, on the computer services, he has some asset replacements and warranty renewals. And then equipment as well, changing out that equipment, how often do you guys change out?
Well, so the reason that it's really high this year is number one, the serverless migration. But we're a little behind on computer replacements. So three to four five year cycle on on replacements. So they gave us already a three year roadmap that we can follow. So we kind of have to catch up this year and then future ones that should be around the twenty five, twenty thousand to twenty five thousand a year.
Right, okay, so so, yeah, so you're a little, you're way.
We got beat, yes.
Yeah, way behind, okay. It just, I know every month or something that comes out uh on that. Um, I'll move to the to the police as well. Uh, chief, um, you know, you and I talked before about, uh, you know, we you have two officers that patrol a full time. And I know that your your wish is to have a third officer out there at some point, especially with the. Geographic layout of the town where you got one into the other and stuff. So I I I really hope, and I think the commission backs it up as as far as trying to get that that third officer somewhere out there to to find. Let's try to make that happen, you know, public safety's got to be.
We just completed a grant submission for a federal grant to try to get it to the four, that would all pay you. The grant was due June fifteenth, we should hear about it sometime, I guess. Right, and we'll know if we get that, if we do get it, the federal government funds seven by percentage of the time.
That's, man, pray that pray that we get that for you. Uh, you get that. And then it blew me away a little bit when you, uh, in your in your paragraph here, you talked a little bit about starting pays for for agencies and and uh, like Belle Isle, Edgewater, Windamere. And they're at fifty one thousand five seven five uh compared to Oakland's starting wage is forty nine thousand nine twenty six. We're only talking a three percent roughly difference, you know, in in that. So. We could try to see if we can get comparable to to something like that.
There's there's other things that I did not include in that would make the disparity far greater, mainly being. Edwood and Belle Isle, I I just did comparable side of the agency, uh, but they pay over twenty five percent. For officer on their pensions, over them in pension plan.
Yeah.
Where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, and I see that and I I saw your memo too about it was supposed to be an increase of two percent. Um, for a year, I think it was, is that to me? Halfing it. Gapping at twenty, to get the twenty percent from the four.
So then we're we're at least, it was supposed to be a slow incremental increase and everything.
That's it for that. And then let's go to um. The legislative budget memo, Andy, I know you sent this out as well on that. Um, I know there's some memberships as well in there and. Obviously, the Fort League of Cities is an important one, Fort League of Mayor's, West Orange Chamber, I think it's good, Tri League's good. Uh, we have one on here for Central Florida Boy Scouts. I don't know how much dealings we do with those guys and and what it is. I mean, Fort of the the Central Florida Council Boy Scouts is pretty big. Uh, you know, they have a, they have a lot, so please. Yeah.
And they help a lot. One forty five, which the town benefits through the Oakland Nature Preserve, our, to allow Project Eagle to stay around our town. So it's shaping up the future of our kids, which is gonna end up in full circle, uh, rating safety. She tests that, Eagle Scouts don't end up in jail. College or C E O. I think it's a big, it's it's big, but if it's not something that the town wants, push will be done. Does it happen now? We'll be missed out on our fantasies in the future.
Okay. Okay. Uh, let's go to, um, the meetings and workshops that we have that are coming up. I think, uh, Sal, I think you were going to the, um, uh, the diplomat, the representative town, um, as well on that. And, uh, it looks like we've budgeted somewhere around thirty five hundred dollars, um, in there. I want, I want everybody to think about this as well. Some municipalities, Orlando, Orange County, each commissioner gets a equal amount of a stipend to use as they feel needed. I don't know if anybody's open to that, where you say, okay, well, you take thirty five hundred dollars divided by five, and then that's what you can use it for for the year. And then that's it. And, you know, if that's something, instead of us double dipping and, hey, I gotta go, you gotta go. If Commissioner McMullin has a particular event that he wants to go to, hey, your ears, I need to go to it, you as well and Rick and everything like that. Correct, correct. Cause you may sit there and go, well, hey, I wanna go to this event, uh, that's not on here or whatever. I wanna use two hundred bucks of that to register to go to that conference and stuff like that.
I know that's what you guys budgeted, but I'm not sure that's what we spent when we go to the diplomat. I, I think that's inflated.
Yeah, um, I think I've, I think the commissions have come, have come before and then gone to the conferences, like Florida League of Cities Conference. They decided, uh, who's gonna go and, you know, for this year, I know it's been, uh, Commissioner McMullin that goes and represents the town. Has been that one person for the town. Um, so it's, it's just a matter of the commission's preference on how they wanna handle the Florida League of Cities. And either anything else that is committed.
A lot of these budgets are over, 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 you know, fluff. Mayor, they're not.
Let's keep them that way.
Yes. Those budget, I just, I just wanted, I included just one, uh, attendee, but like to say, like, I guess at the last meeting that, um, Commissioner Ramos was gonna be appointed to go. So that will be two people attending the conference in this year's budget. This budget that you're looking at is.
That's right. That's right.
We need, if we wanna, if we need to look at all those things and come up with whatever the commission is, they wanna do it, the entire commission. You know, there's municipalities that send that, that let the, the, the entire commission go to the Florida League of Cities conferences. There are some that only do one. There's some that do three. There's some that do two.
Every one of the events that I've attended to, I never bring up gas bill, toll booth or dinner. I mean, it's just whatever the night was. So I know this is super, cause I thought thirty five hundred dollars was for all five of us.
That's for the entire, that was for all the events.
For the entire year.
Yeah, the entire year for all the events.
Yeah. The challenge with that is when you look at these conferences, you send one person, which you bring back, one, one person cannot bring, can be impactful. You can't, um, I've, I've, um, asked for years to get more of us to come. Because if you, if we go this one person, there's a lot of resources out there. Yeah. And we, uh, I bring by grants. Last year, I think three of us went, it was in Orlando. I could, I know Mike, I think all of us went. Been honored, but there's a lot of resources. The fact that we got a free grant service is because of me going to the F L C conferences and interacting with the F L C and being on the board of F L C and, and understanding how all that works and how we got the pension fund and other opportunities. So we can look at it and, and penny pinch when it comes to these conferences. It's not about fun. It's about learning and bringing back best practices. You send one person, you're gonna miss out a lot.
No, I, I can a hundred percent agree with you. If, if all five of us can go to a place, I'm all for it. If everyone, if you can go to every one of these events and all five of us, two of us, three of us can go, great. But there's a dollar amount that's been sitting here.
Right.
So we have to live within that dollar amount is what I'm, is what I'm saying. Unless we wanna try to move some, allocate some money, reallocate some money to sit there and go, well, instead of thirty five, maybe make it five. What do we cut? What are we gonna do to do that? That's all I'm saying. We just gotta live within the needs.
Well, yeah, I think, I think, I, I definitely believe, but you gotta look at return on that investment too.
That's right.
I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. It doesn't even like those conferences, you know, that's not, that's not the thing he wants to do. I've got nothing against him. He doesn't wanna do those things.
You know.
But even, you know, but I really think that talking about a thirty five hundred dollar ticket on a budget of nine million dollars.
Yeah.
That's a small percentage and I'm advocating that we really look at some of those things that are important to this town. Cause I'm not gonna be here forever either. And we, uh, we need someone to engage in those conferences on a regular basis. If I just don't think that, uh, it should be looked at as something bad or looked at as something that needs to be scaled down when you bring back so much to this town from, uh, education.
Got so much education to pick up. Again, what a plan for twenty thirty, right? I'm looking all the way to twenty thirty. What the property value is gonna be here and what we're gonna be bringing in. And if we're all gone, whatever new board members are here, you need to start learning. This place is a great place to learn how to navigate and how to deal in this, in this position. And it helps bring back all that intelligence to our town.
It, it, it does. And, and I will say that, uh, you know, the whole networking connections work, watching us, who you know, type of thing. And it does help out for that. And, and there's no doubt in my mind that, that's it. But if we're, we, we have these parameters, we gotta try to either manipulate the parameters or we gotta stay within the parameters. That's all, that's all I'm, uh, I'm talking here. So, um, I know I'm looking at the ants. Try to keep the elephants from happening, you know, right? The ants all add up. It does. It all adds up. It does. It's, it's.
Would that include hotel fees, you know, like?
Yes. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, does it?
No.
Thirty five hundred dollars if you go somewhere. I'm sure the diplomat's probably more than a hundred dollars a night. You stay.
Oh, yeah.
How long has it been? Thirty five hundred dollars is my question. Twenty years?
Yeah.
A lot of years. So I mean, we're talking about increases for pay and, you know, living.
Well, there is some stuff to make. When I, I give you the example is this year I am going to go off of our insurance plan. There's a, a big bucket right there. We can take and move that around and put what we need to go with. Yeah. And again, this is for next year, not this year. This year's already set, but next year and, and this thing. So it sounds to me, Andy, we've got a little bit of time to kinda look at this before September.
Right.
Right. Then we can make it. I think any other questions, we'll just direct them to you. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Look at it and then we'll bring it back.
Say that the budget just was the budget based on the.
Yeah.
No. But we need it. But if the commission is gonna go next year, let's just get that nailed down and maybe work out a however, the commission will like to proceed with that, but it's, it's not, not that.
You like the part about the number I think is, I really feel more than one person needs to go to these conferences.
Yeah.
That's what I've been advocating for a long time. But.
We always go, yeah. Yeah. Even if you kept the number at that, if you kept it, we need more people going to.
But I, I mean, I'd love for three of us to go, be able to go to, down to, uh, Miami to kinda grab some different events and, and stuff like that. I mean, you know, same with the, uh, you know, the chamber after hours and all that stuff's very important. You get to meet your, your people there and stuff. Like, yeah, there's a lot of them that happen, but.
Andy, not to get off the subject before we close out, the Capitol and movement, I didn't see nothing for Pollard Park.
It's, wanna see if you guys, we can agree to put something there. For the basketball court. I mean, that place, we had an event this year and by next year, I feel a lot of residents that we're gonna try to do something, anything. And, uh, you were out there, Mayor, I mean, Mike, it's, it's a bad shit. It's been, you know, we're, we're taking care of that this, this.
I just didn't see it. Okay, this year?
Yeah, this, this year that we're.
Perfect, perfect. Want to clear that up.
All right. Yeah. And nothing else. We're right on time here. That's good. We need to open to the public. Sorry. Anybody, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to close it early. Anybody in the audience have any questions? If not, okay. Close that part. All right, guys. Let's take five minutes maybe and reconvene. Okay, uh, everyone, we're gonna begin our regular town submission meeting, um, for, uh, June twenty fifth. Um, the, uh, let's call to order the, uh, Oakland Town Commission meeting. Break. Could please rise to the, uh, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Sound with you.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment this evening and that you help us make decisions for the best of our town citizens. And we honor you in everything we say this evening in your glorious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sal.
Fisher McMullin.
President.
Fisher Pollan.
Here.
Fisher Ramos.
Present.
Ice Mary Satterfield.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
I'm here.
We're all here.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, so we've got, uh, presentations tonight and we are fortunate to have Senator Geraldine Thompson to join us tonight to give us a few legislative updates. So Senator Thompson, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. And, uh, you all have given me the honor of representing the town of Oakland. Uh, in Florida, that I, uh, represent State District fifteen, which is. And one of the things that I, uh, like to do, I feel that I'm responsible, um, to let you know what I've done since I presented Calhasy. And so I have a very brief PowerPoint to look at some of the bills that were filed, some passed, some failed. To look at the budget. I was asked, uh, if I had good news for you with regard to the budget. I wish that I had better news, but the good news with regard to the budget is that, uh, the majority of the legislators felt that your projects were worthy, uh, felt that they were things that should be included. And unfortunately, uh, those projects did not survive the governor's veto. But they were in the budget. So I think that that is, that is the news. With regard to some of the other things that were included in the budget that impacted Orange County, uh, we had, um, okay.
That's everybody else.
Oh, you have, right. Yeah. Okay. Well, then I'll just do it that way. Other projects that were in the budget had to do with student, this voluntary, uh, pre-k, uh, the center, public school, uh, workforce education, pace road, main street intersection improvement, Valencia UCF and second harvest, uh, food bank. We had a total of over a hundred and seventeen billion dollars in the state budget. A lot of that, uh, was, uh, from the federal government. And we know that, uh, many of those dollars are going to be drying up. Uh, they were included in the American Rescue Plan, and so those dollars will be going away. Uh, however, given we have billions of dollars now in reserve, I felt that we should have used those dollars to address some of the concerns in committees. The budget was made of fifty billion in general revenue, sixty eight billion in trust fund spending, ten billion in reserve, three percent pay increase for all state employees, thirty billion for education, forty six billion for health and human services, seven point three billion criminal and civil justice, twenty billion for transportation, tourism and economic development and nine point nine billions for agriculture and the environment. One of the bills that passed that, um, concerns me because it is a preemption bill. Uh, it overrides home rule and I am a big home rule proponent. I think that local elected officials should be able to propose local solutions for local problems. And so this is a preemption bill that passed and it restricts local governments from setting minimum wages that are different than the state or the federal, uh, minimum wage. It prohibits municipalities from requiring an employer or government contractor to meet or provide heat exposure requirements. And to just clarify what that means to, uh, to you is that, uh, local governments cannot put in place safeguards to give outdoor workers water, shade and rest. And we know we have lots of people, we see them, um, along the roadways, we see them on rooftops. We see them gathering, uh, the vegetables and to say that local governments now, uh, cannot put things in, in place to require water, uh, rest and shade. I think that's wrong headed. Um, it prevents businesses from basing their wage structures and employment benefits and, uh, considering that in a competitive solicitation process and prevents local governments from imposing regulations on private employers regarding, uh, scheduling. This bill got a lot of visibility. I'm sure you've heard about it. It allows, uh, minors fifteen and, um, seventeen year olds to work, um, up until eleven P M on school nights. And most of them are still in school at seventeen. And I'm a former teacher, uh, taught in the classrooms and spent twenty four years as an administrator at Valencia. And I know that students need rest, they need sleep. So I have a particular concern about this one. I proposed a bill because I'm concerned about some of the restrictions for voting. Now, in order to vote by mail, you have to request a ballot every election cycle rather than requesting it until you cancel it. And so my bill would have done a lot of things that are explained, uh, here, including making Election Day a holiday, offering same day voter registration, uh, establishing automatic voter registration. And that bill did not, uh, did not pass. And it was saw the Harry T and Harriet B Moore Florida Voting Rights Act. Another bill that would have provided protection for election workers, uh, did not pass. It failed and because of the climate, the environment that we're operating in, we have seen election workers threatened, harassed, et cetera. And we were trying to put in place some protections for them. The next bill has to do with marijuana. Uh, recreational marijuana will be on the ballot in November. We already passed, uh, medical, uh, marijuana, and there were certain populations that were left out. And so we went back to take a look at that because everyone can have an equal opportunity to be competitive. And so black farmers, uh, now have three licenses that, uh, they can compete for with regard to marijuana. Another bill would have prohibited the removal of monuments, historic monuments and statutes, and that turned out to be a bill really about Confederate statues. And so, uh, that bill, uh, failed. Another bill that passed was, um, prohibiting anyone from getting within twenty five feet of a first responder after a verbal warning with the intent to impede, threaten physical harm or, or harass. And twenty five feet, um, is not very far. And, um, in terms of accountability, we know what happened in some instances because people were close enough to video, use their phones. And so this is, this is a bill, uh, that in my opinion is also problematic. Another preemption, uh, it eliminates independent police review boards and takes away their authority to have oversight and disciplinary power within law enforcement agencies throughout the entire state. Live Healthing was a bill that I supported because we have a shortage of healthcare professionals and we want to attract, uh, more people going into that area. We want to build the, the workforce there. And so there were three different bills, but they amounted to one point five billion in healthcare spending to address the shortage of healthcare providers and support innovation in healthcare. We are in the process of looking at redetermination for Medicaid during COVID. Those, um, requirements and eligibility standards were relaxed. And a lot of people, once COVID was over and the emergency was over, uh, people were, uh, removed from Medicaid. And so now we're going back to look at redetermination, but we wanna make sure that people who should receive Medicaid, um, do receive Medicaid. And then, uh, there was a bill with regard to, uh, L G B T Q individuals. And, uh, it failed, but it would have prevented conversion, uh, therapy. And I think that in a state that prides itself on parental rights, that, that should be enough to the parents and not to politicians. We had other bills that, uh, passed, uh, that would create hardship. We had other bills that, uh, passed, uh, that would create harsher penalties for immigrants who were previously deported and then arrested for illegally returning to the U. S. or found guilty of participating in drug cartel activities. And so we have young people now who are going to be working up until eleven o'clock at night because we have a labor shortage. And a lot of the people who used to do this work are immigrants, and, um, I think the two are connected. Online protection for minors prohibits young people thirteen and under from having social media accounts, and children fourteen and fifteen would be able to have it, uh, with parental permission. Another bill that passed makes it illegal for people to camp out or to sleep in public places. And counties and municipalities would have to, um, corral those folks and put them in a camp where there might not be security, uh, might not be sanitation, water, uh, you might have, uh, women and children exposed to people with backgrounds that you would not want them exposed to. And that, in my opinion, is, is an unfunded mandate. Municipalities like the town of Oakland are required to do this, but the state provided no funding, uh, to support it. And there was a attempt to raise the threshold, to get something, um, in the Constitution as an amendment from sixty percent to sixty-six point sixty-seven percent, and that failed. This is like the third or fourth time that there has been an effort, uh, to do that. Uh, so Amendment Four, as I mentioned before, will be, uh, on the ballot. And, uh, it has to do with, uh, women making medical decisions rather than having those decisions, uh, made by the government. That will be on the ballot. The voters will also decide on, uh, whether or not to enable the use of recreational, uh, marijuana. So I give you all the amendments that are going to be on the ballot and important dates to remember, uh, that are coming up. Uh, the deadline to register to vote is July twenty-seventh. August eighth is the deadline to request that ballots, uh, be mailed for the primary election. And the primary early voting election, August tenth through the seventeenth and August twentieth, is primary election day. So I wanted to go through these real quickly, and the governor still has some bills that he has yet to sign or to veto. He had signed the, uh, and as I mentioned, vetoed a number of items, including all funding for arts and culture, um, programs. And with a surplus, as I said, I think that some of those dollars could be used to address some of the need in our communities. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's a lot of there. So we really appreciate your time and effort spending a few minutes with us tonight.
Okay. And I don't go back until after the November election. We're all, uh, running for election or reelection, and it won't be until the general election that we will know who the legislators are going to be in terms of who was elected or not elected, and the legislature will come be in March of twenty twenty-five. So I'm home. So if you need me, give me a call.
And again, we, you know, before she, before she leaves, I want the, the entire audience to know that all the years that we got monies from the state of, uh, from the state of Florida, he's the only legislator that was either sponsored or co-sponsored every budget request that we had, even the first time we tried and we failed. But ever since then, she was the only, she's the only legislator who's been at the entire time, whether she was a senator or a state rep. She was the one who quarterbacked this for us in the beginning, and every year we went, she was the only one, not saying anyone was against it, but she was the only one, Senator Thompson was the only one who's been there each and every time when we submit a request to the state. So I want to make sure everyone understands that, and thank you so much for that.
I was really going to say the same thing. Thank you for the service that you give us because it has been impactful through the years. So we do sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm glad to represent you for the city. Thank you very much. And, and plan on continuing to do that.
Okay, uh, we're moving on, uh, to our second presentation, which is from Metro Plan. In the rear, uh, Vision Zero, uh, presentation. So good evening.
Uh, my name is Ryan Mansfield. I'm assistant associate, the transportation manager, and is working Metro Plan, uh, the Safety Action Plan.
You might want to speak up a little bit.
Okay. All right. Well, I have anyone else? Uh, and I'd also mention, it's fair, large, and stop to hear from it, in case you have any questions for her. Um, so on the screen, you can see the agenda that we'll be walking through. Uh, I believe someone from Metro Plan more was recently here at another commission meeting and kind of went over high level what Vision Zero is, kind of what our goals are. Um, so I will hit that at a very high level. Uh, so yeah, Vision Zero, but what Vision Zero is, it's really, it is a vision. The point is to eliminate fatal and severe injury crashes on our roadways. Um, so Metro Plan is working with every jurisdiction, that's regional level, county level, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole, and each local jurisdiction within those counties to develop the Safety Action Plan. So that is what we are working on. So Vision Zero is the goal, eliminating fatal and severe injury crashes. Um, a safety system is the system that we use that has been public to accomplish. Um, so a safe system, it's, it's the methodology. There are five elements to that. Safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, the roads, and post-crash care. Um, so Point Zero is the goal. That, and the point of this is to really recognize that the transportation network is a, a system, and it's a holistic approach. There are many elements to that. Uh, we can't just target one of these kinds of real significant changes. We have to look at it from a whole list. So Metro Plan One, um, grant funding from the six-year-old grant from U. S. D. O. T. Uh, that funding is what is funding development of Town of Oakland's plan as well as all the other plans. Uh, once this plan is, all this plan is to be able to use this for funding to actually implement projects, whether engineering projects, policy projects, educational projects, uh, that is kind of the safe prerequisite to be able to craft a federal. So the development of this plan, uh, we have a working group, uh, which includes, I mean, I, and the police partner. Um, we've been working with them closely throughout this process. Um, it started with a crash analysis, really driven, data-driven, looking at the historical crash data between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty-two. Where are the crashes that are happening on our roadways? Uh, those are the places that we want to focus on. And then public outreach was another significant of this. At the regional level, public engagement has been ongoing for quite some time now, um, probably almost halfway through last year. Um, you can see there was, there was a speaker series, there was a press conference that was, uh, December. Uh, in the lower right corner, you can see what we're calling the data hub. Uh, this is a hub that is online, publicly available, uh, to public to be able to dig in and look at all the crashes occurring within the Metro Plan region, as well as search county and jurisdiction. There are ways to break that down. Um, and then many other resources that were produced, fact sheets, uh, and other resources that have been disseminated to, to make people aware of what we're trying to publish. Uh, for local public engagement, uh, we've conducted a pop-up event, basically showing up in an event that's already occurring where we know people are going to be at. Uh, so we were at Spring Fever in the Garden, uh, April sixth. Um, purpose of that was to bring the Safety Action Plan, what this was, what we're trying to accomplish, the data, what we're seeing, uh, really just talk to the public, get their input, what types of things are they seeing on the roadways, what safety issues are they seeing, what types of improvements would they like to see more of, um, and just spread awareness of what issues there is, what we're trying to accomplish. Um, there was also an online survey that was available for public comment and feedback, um, and what the official's guide, as well as a kids' activity booklet we were able to hand out. Um, some high-level crash data. So there were a hundred and twenty-four total crashes in the town of Oakland between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. Uh, those involved severe injuries. One was a pedestrian and one was an angle crack, no fatalities. And to be honest, these numbers are actually really good. Although we want to eliminate those two severe injuries, this is really low, and so that's, that's a great place to start from. Um, but still not to say there aren't safety issues. Um, so we saw three pedestrian and three bicycle crashes, which are crashes that we often see resulting in serious fatalities. Um, and, and also another thing to note that almost a third of the crashes involve either drug or alcohol or distracted driving. Um, on this next slide, you can see the high injury network. Uh, what this is, is the high injury network is defined as basically a set of roadways or intersections where we see most of the fatal and severe injury crashes occurring within an area. Um, so the purpose of this is to identify what roadways intersection focus efforts on, uh, where are we going to get the big span for a buck? Um, as I mentioned, there were only two severe injury crashes in the town of Oakland. Good number to see. So as a result, the high injury network is pretty small, um, but it makes up about three percent of the town's roadways. Um, owing that, developing high injury network, knowing where we want to focus, I'm going to look at several projects. Um, these projects are based on Metro Plan's prioritization material, um, a opinion in front of the top space, an approximate approximation, planning level costs. Um, these are not detailed numbers, but on a high level, what types of funds would be needed to actually build these projects? Um, I will note that all these projects are on county or state roads, so they will require additional coordination. Uh, they're not on town streets specifically, um, but these projects came up out of the view of high injury network as well as other crash patterns we saw, um, such as angle crashes, left turn crashes, run-off-the-road crashes, head-on crashes, that's crashes that we typically see resulting in those fatalities seriously. And so to wrap up, um, where we're at right now, we are still looking on the Safety Action Plan draft document. Uh, we'll highlight that in the lot. And hopefully provide that to you all for your review and comment in the lot, and with the intention of hopefully being able to stop that plan by the end of August. Once that plan is placed, that is the prerequisite, next step to being able to go after federal funding, you guys. Uh, but beyond that, it's also just a great place to start with, knowing where are your issues, what types of projects you'd be looking to do. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of the goal. But that's all I got. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Thanks for helping to keep everybody safe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions for anybody? Good? Thanks, Ryan. Thank you. All right, uh, it's on, and it looks like a proclamation act.
The reading what?
Probably one of the best proclamations if you're a citizen of the United States. All right, Town of Oakland Independence Day, whereas the Continental Congress by resolution adopted on July second, seventeen seventy-six, declared that thirteen American colonies, colonies, were free and independent states. And whereas two days later, on the Fourth of July, the Congress adopted a Declaration of Independence, proclaiming to the world the birth of the United States of America. Now therefore be it known that on this day, we celebrate the spirit of liberty, courage, and unity that led to the establishment of our great nation. Let us honor the sacrifices of our forefathers and cherish the principles of freedom, equality, and justice that continue to guide us. Now therefore I Shane Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, and on behalf of the entire Town Commission, do hereby proclaim July fourth, twenty twenty-four as Independence Day, a time for reflection, gratitude, and celebration. So. Gosh, come on.
And for the record.
Come on, America.
That's my grandchildren.
Oh, it's good, good, good.
They're Americans.
And plus you get the, uh, Nathan's hot dog eating, uh, contest that day too. So, um, next on the agenda is, uh, yeah, it is, Public Forum. Uh, so when we open it up to anybody in the audience that, uh, maybe wants to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda. So any takers out there tonight that would like to speak? Hello, Donna, how are you today? Oh, come on up. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Donna Reed. I live at one hundred Vandermere Street, uh, right down the road. Uh, just a couple of little things I want to kind of talk about. I know it's going to come up, or I'm hoping it's going to come up about this cutting down of these tree situation. Um, I mean, we have to do something. I'm worried that we quite a long act back whenever these people come in here. These developers really do not care what you guys say, um, because they, they're, they just do it, you know, whatever y'all say afterwards. They just, they really don't care. Um, so I think we have to come up with something that, um, is done ahead of time, that either trees or rearms that they're going to cut down or they can't cut down, they're marked somehow. And then there is a, I mean, huge fine levy when they just go do whatever they want to do. Um, anyway, I mean, I've seen it for many, many years, and I just think there's, I understand the development. I'm not against the development. But I think we have to look at the trees as a really important resource for the town of Oakland. Uh, so I think something needs to be done about. Um, the next thing I have is, I kind of am trying to find out, when are we going to start enforcing the new golf cart ordinance? And the rules of who can and cannot be driving them. And several times I know, I mean, I live on the corner of, uh, Vandermere and Star and Vic in that area, and I was sitting on my horse the other day, and there is a lady in a golf cart. And I'm just thinking the kid driving it was maybe six years old, and she was leaning over, she's in the passenger seat, helping him turn the wheel, you know, around, around the street. And I mean, it's so dangerous. Um, so I do, I know the police chief was telling me they were waiting on some ticket books or something that had to be purchased. But I think that's something that's going to have to be really looked at because this ordinance, oh, there you are, chief, I didn't see you. Um, in any case, um, I just think that's something that's going to have to be looked at because the ordinance was passed quite a while ago. And I know that we were doing a grace period for people to understand it. But I don't know if it's an educational thing or something we have to do to try to get it out there that, you know, a seven-year-old kid does not need to be driving a golf cart. Uh, so I mean, I mean, I took a picture of him just to say, no, this really happens, you know? So I mean, I see it every day because everybody that drives golf carts comes down my street and around. That whole area is a big area right there, getting over to, um, Oakland, going downtown Winter Garden. So, you know, my background in the fire department, I, I wish other people had the knowledge to have been able to see what I've seen over the years on golf carts because people take them so for granted. And I can't tell you how many deaths we've, I've seen just from a golf cart, critical injuries. So I just think that's something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. The next thing, it's a big, really big thing. I sent an email to Elise in reference to the sound system here, and I, I, I brought it up before in past meetings. And I don't think it's something that we can wait on. And I know, I think I saw it in the budget that, you know, that's going to be coming. But we have to do something and nothing less than getting some kind of one of those machines that we hooked up in here to, you know, people can pass around the mic or something. Because I have a couple of people that I know of. One, my hearing is not that great anymore just from probably being in the fire department. Uh, but I know my husband is hard of hearing, and, um, I just think it's really unfair that we ask people to come to these meetings, and we ask people to listen to them on Zoom, and they can't hear. And it doesn't matter how much we stand up here and say, speak up, speak up. It's not always about the volume by which somebody is speaking. It's about having the microphone here so their words are more clear. A lot of people, when they're hard of hearing, their word recognition is not good, and it's not that they can't hear you yelling them. They can't understand the words because of the amplification of the words. And I, I don't know if it's an ADA violation or not, but I do, uh, just to keep everything in the open, I do plan on calling, um, Department of Justice, ADA compliance tomorrow to find out. And I, I just think I, I've brought it up so many times, and I think it's unfair to say we have to wait for a twenty thousand dollar sound system when we were okay spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right down the road, and we didn't have to wait for that. So I think that's really unfair, and I think it's something that needs to be looked at, like now. So those are the three things I have. Thank you for.
So let me, let me address the tree issue as well. Um, just, uh, you know, it, 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 we, we understand what happened. We take it very seriously. What happened? I mean, we are a tree city, U. S., we do all that. And, um, we did have a internal meeting yesterday morning about the issue that happened, uh, with the social media, uh, that went around on that. That went around on that in in the Grove. And we did take a look at our tree ordinance that's there and it is in the land development code as well. So we have our town planner Brad and Andy and Elise, they are looking at adding a little more bite to it.
Yes.
That's there because as it sits today, there are not enough consequences.
Right.
To doing something. So in that particular instance, I don't know if Andy or Mike or anybody wants to talk about it, just to. Set the story and the and the record straight on what did.
Yeah, yeah, I can clarify a little bit and. You know, the town talks through tree mitigation plan and then the. As the contractor designs the the lot layout and the roads and the infrastructure. Between then and that point, there are some conflicts that come into play with some of these trees. And so at all the trees the town intended to save, any, there were additional nine that we had to had to be removed due to utility conflicts. Which did not, does not have to come back according to the ordinance back before the town commission for approval. So it kind of has that appearance that we're the town, you know, the developers removing additional trees that he wasn't approved for. But the town's approved this. So what we're looking to do is probably in that stage where there's an approved plan and where there is an actual conflict. Runway or drainage. Or utility line is probably provide another review for maybe a town engineer or vice. Us just agreed to a plan saying, yes, that tree can be removed, having it looked at by maybe our town engineer. Before we have that removed or changed, that's a little bit there towards the end.
I I do understand that.
Yeah.
I don't have a developed background, but I do have a little bit of a background in that just from my job that I used to do. And I think I would say to that, I do understand it, but they're charging three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for those lots. And if it comes down to, oh, we have this road that's going to go right here, but we have to cut this tree down. Oh, but it's going to cost us twenty thousand more dollars to go this way. You know what? So what? And I think that has to be looked at as well because I think the town, although the developers are important. I mean, they're the ones that bring the development here. So I guess in a way they're important. All they're thinking about is their bottom line and their money. And all you all should be thinking about is what is best for the town. Is it saving that tree that's a hundred years old or and be. You should, you all should not really care whether it's going to cost them X amount of dollars more. To to make their vision come true. So put one less house in. I don't care. You know, make it one less house. I mean, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a lot. What's one less lot going to do in the scheme of, you know, a a house? The majority of those houses, they say, are going to be, or the ones down here as well. They say, oh, they're going to be one point five million dollars to start. Yeah, that's one house probably in the whole thing. Because we all know the majority of those houses are probably going to be closer to two million dollars.
Yeah.
So I think that we have to look at it like that.
Yeah, and and I believe that's what we discussed yesterday is a, you know, you have a a plan that comes in. You see an overall plan that's got Xs on trees that are supposed to go out. Well, you're not really seeing the full engineering, the plans that come in that maybe shows a storm line that that has a tree. And 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 like Andy said, it's time to get some other parties maybe involved and scrutinize it a little more. You know, unfortunately, that's it's.
It's done.
It's done. You can't go back, but moving forward, you know, we need to start pushing on that a little more. And and so I know that the staff is pushing to try to get something out in front of us to kind of look at it sooner rather.
If you look at the apartments, when they took out all the stuff that they were not supposed to take out. And then the town came in there and said, you have to plant this long this road. Well, everything, if you look, if you split those in half, almost everything to the west end that they planted is dead. There's so much that who's going to make them replant that?
I will say out of the entire property, town went out with the harvest that we marked the trees and we wanted to be saved and out of that entire lot. Nine that the engineer for the developer had to had to take out as a result of the plan. So but we do, even though nine had it scrutinized maybe by another engineer.
Right.
To ensure those.
Saying is, in the end of the day, the developer does not care. If they take out something they're not supposed to, there's really no penalty other than saying, oh, we're sorry, we'll plant a couple more trees. But I think that penalty needs to be looked at. I think that's what you said.
No, and 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 that's correct. And that's and 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 I think we all at this table agree on that. Where, you know, if a developer's coming in and he's got a multi, you know, million dollar houses he's building there, just like we do in town. Let me, let me just point out to town. I'm looking at outside right now, looking at this oak tree with the road splits it. I I see the tree that we saved down by the church down Star Street when they paved that, how Mike put the road box. Got some additional right away from the church just to get that road to go around. So so we do take it seriously and and it and it is, it hurts a little bit when you see those old trees come down. And I think it shocks people when they come down. So I I just want to let you know that we are, we we take it serious. And we are on top of it and we're trying to get to the bottom.
Right.
Get something on.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Hey, how are you?
I'm good. Sorry, how you doing?
Good.
Yeah, good. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you on the mayor, the council leadership. Appreciate it. I would just want to start off by saying, guys are doing great work. I know sometime we're going to sit in the all in meetings and see everything you're doing, like a duck under the water. And make a little deal talk. So I really appreciate that. But I want to start off by saying, I sit in this meeting a lot. Uh, Fox and West Hinton down the road. I sit in this meeting a lot of times and I hear us say that, you know, we not bigger, but we have disagreements. But the thing that start, the thing that have disagreements come up is because we don't know each other's history. We don't know a lot of times what people are going through, what people have lost. Oakland has lost a lot of people throughout these years. A lot of people who have been cornerstone of Oakland. Not just not that commissioner, because the commissioner, a lot of commissioners have been doing a great job, but a lot of commissioners before that did a great job too. And a lot of people like Mr. Welch, you know, Willie Welch, Ms. Boston, stuff like that, people who raised the kids and generations coming. And a lot of people are have passed away. We don't know the history. It's easy to read a history book and get history of ancient history. But if we don't know the recent history of these people who have paved the way for us, we're missing out on it. And I want to say this, and that was in my heart for a long time. So I came up with a remembrance day. And what that is, is we're going on August third, August third, I've been taking a tally of the. Residents, at least on the west side, but this is not a west side thing. This is an Oakland thing, right? So it's called Remembrance Day. And when I, when I, I reached out to some vendors, I reached out to Eli, the guy. That did the last event for us in there. He got the foundation. So but what what it does is we're going to bring people up, we're going to have a date that we're going to bring people up, we're going to let them. Talk about the people who have passed, the family members who passed. But I want to put that in with a back to school event, some book bag giveaway and stuff like that. And also I talked to a couple of nurses and nurses and my wife is a nurse out there in. Health center, health center, Orlando Health. So and we got another young lady, she stays on the west, her mom stays on the west side of town, but she's a nurse practitioner. And she's willing to give our physical blood pressure and stuff like that for the for the for the kids going back to school. But like I said, it's just a day that we need to come together and just, let's talk, let's talk because you can't get everything out of a history book. We can't get everything out of a person because they didn't write everything in history book. They wrote everything down in your brain and you sometimes you need to tell them, hey, man, this is what we did fast. Because a lot of these kids out here don't know our history. You know, like you said, I was sat in the budget meeting and we said over two thousand people have joined the town. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty three. That's two thousand people that don't know the history, that don't know the color. Don't know how to be a promontory. So when we get people coming here, they're like, oh, we don't know, we're not doing like this, we're not doing like this. Well, maybe you should understand how we did it before. And maybe we can change and stuff like that, but maybe we can keep this going and, you know, bring you into the tradition that we started. So that's where I got, like I said, it's going to be a remembrance day. I'm not asking for anybody to do anything, no money. I believe that a lot of businesses around here can donate. We donated food, water. And then the worst thing, we can have a potluck and people bring food. But that's just a thing that I've got and I really want to that be successful is going to be, like I said, August day, August third. Probably Toyota four, Toyota two, and our secured venue, our secured parking. With the Cathedral Church on St. Paul, they set the park that we use every venue. We can have, we want to have bounce halls for the kids and just a lot, just a lot of camaraderie that day. So that's my proposal is coming along good. I'm not asking you not, I just want you guys to support it by coming out, bringing kids. Let's make it happen. All right. Thank you.
Go nowhere. I'm going nowhere. I told you this personally, and I'll tell you this in front of everyone. You were just, and and I don't even know how to put it into words, how much I think of what you do and how you try for this town. I call you little Willie because we bring up Willie Welch and gone back all these years. You were that kid that you're talking about. And we started doing all this stuff. What you just described to a T was that very first heritage day. You know, that's exactly what we wanted to do. You could have called it Remembrance Day. You could have called it whatever you want. So I congratulate you, man, on this, what you're trying to do for this town. And 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 I'm sure I can speak for all of us. We appreciate the heck out of everyone and you will always in my mind, you little Willie.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate you.
I want to say thank you very much for what you're doing. It's outstanding that you bring back the Remembrance Day, like you said, Heritage Day, not necessarily. Remembering what people did a hundred, you know, plus years ago. But the people that are gone within the last two, three, four decades. That were sitting here at one time and they're the founding, you know, paving the road. And you grew up listening to their stories. Yeah, there's two thousand plus people who. We were melting and meshing together on how to work with people who come from the outside, who are going to. Bring great ideas to us as well, but without losing the essence of Oakland, who we were within the last fifty years. And I'm so happy you're doing this and you got my full support. I'll go out there and burgers again for you.
I mean, flipping burgers for you. Please say that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You made a comment about the older generation over there and and in history and all that. And I don't know if this is in your plans at all or not, but. A lot of those old stories and what happened here gets lost easily when those people die off or they tell the story or they get misconstrued. And it may be worth it to just kind of look at a way to create an oral history where you sit down with them. And you ask them questions, hey, I mean, what the good old days were like or whatever, what do you remember about town? And and that oral history then really preserves. It can't be what you thought they heard or anything like that. The oral history really preserves. And and I think those would be benefits to the town as well to keep, you know, in our archives. Just to know, I, you know, it's a simple little recording that you could just do and just come up with a series of questions and and do that or a video. As well on some of these old families that were here at the time. Because, you know, we just lost Mrs. Voss that passed away and there was a lot of history there, but there's still some of these. Yeah, there's still a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people here still left that could tell you some stories, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Because I did a lot of videos during the campaign with Mrs. Mrs. Watkins, S. Back. So and so one of the ideas I had was pass, you know, whatever that. Campaign moment was, it's just recording them like you said. And put them in the museum. They could be playing. If you want to go in there, Mrs. Voss is gone. We could have been hearing her say this is how I really was from the horse's mouth. Every one of these people, Mr. Willie Welch, how would, how nice it would have been to be recording him, asking. And putting them in the heritage, you know, museum. So you can go in there and not just the west side. He won't be with us for long. He's got some stories.
He'd be very.
If you want to put there on a video for us. And you want to know about it, press the button and you get.
It, that's great. Yeah, I'd agree. It's very, it's very important to kind of keep that going.
Hey, Lynn.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You go ahead. Before you leave.
Didn't we do an oral history project a few years ago? There's a video like when it first opened of. You know, different interviews, very small. I don't know of a completed oral history project.
Okay, because we had started working with Orange County to do that. Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that.
We ended up getting it. Okay.
Actually, I think Postel was still living when that was the stuff.
Right, right.
Just before you leave, what you, what you're doing. We've been trying to get people to court, I thought, lack of a better word, people to quarterback those things. Couple of names I want to give. I know you probably know Michelle Baker. Okay, she, so she did a back to school last year. And I already reached out to her probably in the fall saying, hey, right after, hey, start working on it. For next fall. So Michelle has done one. Also, connect with Mount Zion Church. Last, I think it was this year, I don't know if they was this year, they have a, they have a a history. Of their church going back to the eighteen hundreds and it's connected to Trinity or whatever it is next door right now. Right, right. So they have a, I actually participated in the program, so they have a history. Also talk to Adrian Cowans. Years ago, he did a basketball thing here that we we try to, I tried to push him to do it. Then Ned, I'm not sure if you can remember, officer Ned, he's a young kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Talk to him because he wants to do so. I'm just giving you some names to collaborate with. And Elijah, the young kid that y'all talked about, he did programs here about ten years ago. Over there. So he 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 didn't recognize me, but we did some programs on the west side before. But back to school and flu shots and all that, that was something that we did for a long time, but we need people like yourselves. Continue to keep that going, but please reach out to Michelle and I'll probably text her again and let her know that you mentioned it. Because I think that's the date she was going to do it out of Mount Zion. I remember Commissioner, Ray was bought bikes and all kinds of stuff and supplies to that last year. So the infrastructure is there. We just need somebody to continue quarterbacking.
Got it. Thanks.
Andy, you have a question, Tim?
Winter Garden History Center, Oakland has some oral videos that they did with. They do a lot of.
Well, that's good.
So he's got, he's got an awful lot. Yeah, don't forget to get a fourth county fire rescue a call because they can set up the help station check. And all kinds of stuff that can go in both packs. Rescue, just go to the fire station up here. I don't know. If you just stop by the fire station, they'll give you the contacts. They're really good and they can, they can be more than just some set their fire truck out here. They'll actually call some of their P I Os and a rescue and a fire truck and they'll do blood pressures, blood glucose, they can put people on.
Excellent, excellent.
They do everything. They're just not utilized because people don't know what to ask for. Tell them you want to set up a little help station and or whatever it is you want to do. That's a great resource.
Let us, let us know when you get those people you want to do an oral history. We'll be on. Yeah, we'll help you out.
You've got a lot of homework.
Thanks, thanks for, thanks for doing it.
Just add a little more date to it. Years ago, Commissioner Boy. During his tenure would do a back to school.
And he did.
It shifted around from Oakland to Tildenville to Winter Garden. So that was something that that was done, but after he got out of office, we weren't doing it anymore. But it was commissioners from all the, all the municipalities and then we were, our host. We'll have someone that's hosting Tildenville and then we have a little child who hosts over there and well, so it's been done. Resource or again, we just need somebody like you to keep it going.
All right. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public forum and move it on to the consent agenda. We've got a few items on here tonight. On the consent agenda, minutes from last meetings. Last, last, two weeks ago's meeting. Number B is emergency debris removal, contract extension. C is construction agreement for lift station seven. D easements, long leaf drainage project. That's a big one. E O A C instructional salary schedule and then the manager report. Any questions or comments? No, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion, please. Okay, second. All right, I'll favor.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Moving on to ordinances and our first ordinance is ordinance number twenty twenty four oh eight. This is the second public hearing. Hello, Brad. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Good. And then I'll read it. Whoops. Hey, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, second public hearing, and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a first amendment to the development agreement for the Grove Plan Development as records in the public records of Orange County, Florida, document number two zero two two zero zero five four six three seven, to implement design guidelines and architectural standards for the Grove project on certain real property by New Zealands Investments LLC, as more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Hey, Brad. How are you tonight?
It's, uh, Brad Criss, Waitram, serving as your contractor town planner. Uh, so as we said, and you did, well, Mayor, tonight is your second reading and your final hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. And what this is, uh, as you recall from the first reading, is that this is to amend the development agreement for the Grove Development, um, to adopt, uh, particular design standards for the project and for the homes within that project. So again, quickly, just a little reminder, um, this project was originally approved by the Town Commission under ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, which is where the development agreement was adopted originally. And then in, uh, January of twenty twenty-two, um, the preliminary subdivision plan was approved by the Town Commission for the forty-four single-family homes here on the project. Um, and this is within your traditional neighborhood design district. Next, please. Um, so again, as, as you recall, what we did with Riley Farm recently, and this is the same situation. Uh, the developer is proposing specific lot and home design standards for the Grove, um, for their project. And that's what this whole purpose of this is, is, is to adopt those standards for this project specific. None of the other conditions or requirements of that development agreement are changing. Everything else stays the same. There's no change in the number of lots or any of the other conditions for this project. It's simply to adopt the design standards which are attached to the ordinance and to the development agreement that you have before you this evening. Next, please. So again, similar to what happened in Riley Farm, they're doing the same kind of setup here. They have different lot types, three different lot types. And based on the different lot types, based on their location, different standards would apply for the development. So again, these are what I would call context sensitive in terms of where, how things are getting built on each of the lots based on their location within the development. So that's how this is being established. Next, please. And these are the four different lot types and the general layout of what the houses would be and their setbacks. Important, uh, thing for you all to know is, if you recall the Riley Farm Phase One, when we went through this process, you all had some changes, where like one, one of the changes you had for that one was for the accessory structure that they had to meet seven and a half foot side setback. They are doing that here. So all the changes that you made to Riley Farms, because they did use that as the model, bringing this forward, they reflected all those changes. So, so they, so the seven and a half foot setback for accessory is here, like in Riley. But what they also did for this one, the same that you did with Riley, the change you made, and that they're doing it here, is on the accessory dwelling unit part of it, where they have the language, same as Riley, where they cannot be a permanent dwelling unit, they can only be used by family or guests, that kind of thing. So that same language is here as well. So it doesn't turn into an apartment. So they, 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 they did all those same changes. In terms of the architecture that they're proposing, again, similar, but they only, they're only proposing two, is the Florida vernacular. And the second would be the French farmhouse. Those are just the two general architectural standards. Within their design guidelines, and there's more specific discussion about what that is in terms of the styles. Uh, my, the question I haven't received before, just quickly, is that they do have the condition too where they can't have the same house next to each other. So maybe they don't have that repetitive kind of look. The other part of the request, and I have this in here because it is a little bit different, and I think I, I wanted to get the commission's approval on this, is for their subdivision sign, for their overall subdivision. So this is a monument sign, um, that they would, proposing to put with their project. This would only be located on their entryway that's on Catherine Ross Road. So this would be on Catherine Ross Road. The only signage that would be on Oakland Avenue would be the, those column signs, similar like Oakland Park. They're actually the same size as well. That would, would be on, on Oakland, but the, the, the larger Grove Monument sign would be on Catherine Ross. Your code says for a subdivision entrance sign, it's limited to thirty-two square feet. What was a little bit difficult in this, this is why this is before you all tonight, to approve this, is if you take the size of that post Grove sign with the base and the letters, the total sign area, the base and the letters together, is forty-four point eight square feet, which exceeds the thirty-two square feet. So that's why we have this before you to approve this as part of their design standards. But we also, I also looked at it from another perspective, just to look at it as many different ways as I could, so I can give you as much information as I can, is if you just take the area of the Grove letters on the top, and just the, the area of the letters at the Harvest District on the base, but exclude the rest of that base area, that comes out to twenty-four point nine square feet, um, in terms of that, for the actual lettering. Um, so in terms of the height of the sign, it's less than eight feet. Um, so it's compliant with your, your sign requirements and code. So really, I, I, I would like, as part of your approval of this, you'd prove this sign and this, this design of it. Uh, one of the things I did as well, and as I looked at other signage, it depends, Oakland Avenue's, the one in particular is, uh, Longleaf, uh, Longleaf, Longleaf Oakland. The signage that they have out on Oakland Avenue, and this is actually almost the exact same size as what they have there. That sign, if you measure the total base there, it's about fourteen feet. The portion of the, the Longleaf sign that has the lettering, that portion's about ten feet in length, and, uh, and about, uh, actually it's total of eight foot high. So this sign is actually very similar in size, and actually this sign is a little bit smaller.
What's the portion of the square feet of the Longleaf sign itself, the letters?
I didn't actually measure the letters themselves. I just measured the structure. Because of what I was concerned, what I was curious about is how to, and they're very similar in size. Um, also, it, it is, when you look at the actual size of these letters on the Grove sign, they're not very high. The, the actual Grove on top, they're about a foot high, about twelve inches high. They're not massive, large letters. And the ones below are just a few inches in height. So it, it's, it's not a very massive sign. And that would go on the Catherine Ross Road side.
So the sign overall is probably about three, three and a half feet, or a foot tall. Right, right. If you add the finished grade to the top of the Grove, yeah.
Correct.
So this is, it's not a very massive sign, but it is larger than thirty-two square feet.
Unless you use a copy area.
Let's just look at the copy area. And your code doesn't give a definition on how you measure the sign area. It just says thirty-two square feet, but it doesn't give a, a direction on a measurement. The typical way that I would measure a sign is I'd just take the smallest geometric shape that fits the sign, including the sign back end. It's typically how I would do it, and that's how I did it here. But because there was different ways you could do it, that's why I'm asking for you all to approve it as part of these designs. Next one. Well, this has gone through quite a few reviews. It did go with this, uh, proposal for these design standards. Once they've been more exactly as conceiving, uh, they did not make any changes to it. And they reviewed on May seventh, and they fully recommended approval unanimously as presented, including the signage that we just spoke about. It was also then reviewed by your planning and zoning board on May twenty-first, and they also did. They obviously recommended also for this to be approved as presented. They had no changes to it either. And then, as you all know, you had your first reading for this on June eleventh, and you presented, you approved it at your first reading as presented. So it's back to conceiving for the final consideration for approval. And that's my presentation. You have to answer any questions. And we do have representatives of the applicant mover items investments this year this evening.
Thanks, Brad.
Yes, sir.
Hey.
Anybody on the table here have any questions or concerns?
No. No. We're, we're right with the sign. It, it is, the height is.
The height's completely compliant, yes, sir.
Okay, so it is an ordinance. We'll open it to the public. Does anybody in the public have any questions or comments on, uh, this second reading? Okay, hearing none, we'll shut the public hearing, bring it back to the table. Um, anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve second reading, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash Grove eight.
Okay, second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to, oh, a couple of plats, uh, to approve. Resolution, when it, when it, I rightly, resolution twenty twenty-four oh four.
Yes.
Final plat for Oakland Park, Unit Seven.
Correct. North. Um, I can.
Can you read it?
A resolution of the town of Oakland, Florida, making findings, approving a final plat for Oakland Park, Unit Seven North, and providing an effective date.
There are top commissioners, uh, this is the request for your approval of the final plat for Oakland Park, Unit Seven North. This is the final phase, final part of Oakland Park development here in the town of Oakland, and this is the twenty-three lots. Um, this plat is fully compliant with the previously approved, um, preliminary subdivision plan of all the final plans um, for this last piece of their subdivision. Um, it's been reviewed by, uh, your town surveyor, your town attorney, and town sat. And we recommend approval of it as presented. And, uh, Sever is here this evening. If you have any questions apart.
Yeah. Hey. Any questions from the table?
No, I don't.
Deborah, how's, it looks good out there. So the, uh, we'll say the pond that, uh, you created, I think will help out tremendously with, uh, anything that could go wrong out there. So that's good. What's your projected time, you think, to complete that?
We played it. We only played it.
Okay, and then the, as far as this last, uh, paving the road, or here, sorry, should have been more specific. All right, okay, great, great. And you got a big pile of dirt to move, and then. Yes, set to go.
And as you know, on seven south, we're going up quickly. We actually moved steel on two of them today. So.
Yeah. Wow, you'll be done in there in a year. Great.
All right, Deborah, I've got a question. It was brought up at a commission meeting a few weeks ago that the drop off there is pretty close to the road. And I talked about that. Is there any way to put some sort of a, a barrier there to keep people going down that road?
Um, like just to get a slip rope and just like that.
Yeah, something so someone doesn't go off the edge of.
Fairly steeped. It is a four to one slope, which is fairly, um, not steep. Um, but yes, we, um, I think we talked to Mike about, um, the type of that slip rope.
Perfect. You didn't even have to get up for that.
Okay, uh, it is a, anybody in the audience, any comments or anything? Hey, hearing none, we'll close that and bring it back here. If I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make the motions, accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great job. All right, moving on to resolution twenty twenty-four oh five. This is the final plat for the Grove.
Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-four zero five, a resolution that town of Oakland, making findings.
This mayor, you mentioned that they said this is the final plat for the Grove. Um, this, you did for the design standards, this will now be the plat for the forty-four lots of this development. Again, the plat is compliant with the previous improvement, the subdivision plan, plans for this property. I do want the commission to know one of the street names, the developer did agree to name one of the streets after longtime resident of town, Sarah Matthews. Uh, you may see that on the plaque. One of the entries goes up, Oakland Avenue, Sarah Matthews.
Her family know that? Their family?
Yes, that would actually be coordinated with her family.
Thanks. Thanks.
So.
Thank you for doing that. Thanks for doing that.
Again, the surveyor and attorney and town staff have argued.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's your other question.
Sure, thank you. Any comments from the table here? Um, when are you, how's your project going as far as? Good? What's your timeframe, you think? Just curious.
I'm done. Here.
Okay. So you're ready to start at the end of the year, going vertical?
Yeah.
All right, great. All right, great. Okay, anybody from the audience have any questions or comments? Okay, none. We'll close that and bring it back here. I'll entertain a motion.
Same motion, uh, to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five.
Okay, second. Second by Rick, all in favor? Aye. All right. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, so now we move to another budget. Oakland Avenue Charter School Budget. Hello, I sold the wire. How are you tonight? Good, thank you.
Hello, meeting members.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, uh, for your attention tonight. Uh, I just wanted to share some highlights in regards to the budget and, um, town manager. And you said earlier that, uh, this, uh, is something that definitely improved by July one, that we have, um, the ability to act on time, spending within August year, which is July one through June thirtieth of each year. So the purpose of this is to present you with a summary of what our plans are for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, um, school year. And it is tentative as we will, um, continue to look at, um, revenues, how the legislative budget is, uh, finished. And I have some, uh, updates that I can share in a minute here about that. But, um, make sure that our revenues and everything are intact, we make some adjustments, and it will be considered as quote unquote final with, uh, the town budget that occurs in September. So, um, the few things that I wanted to highlight in regards to this is that, um, it's really important, uh, that we communicate and share, um, with everybody that always sees it's completely self-funded. Um, I know that that sometimes becomes a question in regards to, uh, where the funds come. They, we are funded by, uh, students, um, P E, it's all, it's full-time equivalent. And so we are self-funded, and so we, um, are self-sustaining over there. So it's, uh, great, uh, wonderful to, uh, ease everyone's mind that there is not a burden, uh, that exists, um, outside of that. The revenue calculated that we used, we used, um, our numbers from last year, which was a part of the conversation that was happening earlier. But we took, um, a look at what was the, um, tentative legislative, um, projections. At the time, we did some calculations, um, figured out that we, we put a two point five percent increase in, um, from the twenty-three, twenty-four revenue. Um, however, looking at the legislative update, uh, they actually did a two hundred and four dollar increase for students, which is actually a two point seven five percent increase. So, um, we, there's more revenue coming than, um, what we had budgeted for. So that will be a part of the calculations when we do a final budget. Um, there is also in that legislative update, if you look at it, there was a forty million dollar increase to safety, um, components. How that will trickle down to O A C S, um, is yet to be determined. And that usually comes out of when they release the budget calculator, uh, which will be anytime now. And so we will run our numbers to make sure our revenues align with the calculations that are current. We are carrying forward sixty-two thousand dollars that was allocated for capital, um, improvement projects, um, from the twenty twenty-three school year budget. We are also planning to carry forward a hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement dollars from our S R three grants. The S R three grants, um, need to be, um, things need to be spent and allocated and submitted by September thirtieth. Uh, we have held on to some of those particular expenses, um, so that we can carry that into this school year to accomplish some of the things that we need to accomplish. Uh, we are fortunate enough that we're fortunate to come out of this particular school year because of, um, S R funds and because of the use of those funds to, um, offset regular budget expenses. We are anticipating about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar reserve from this budget year that will go into reserves, um, for, you know, catastrophes or other things that we need in the future. So we are carrying forward a hundred thousand to help us. The P T O fundraising contribution is the highest it's ever been. It was, it is eighty thousand dollars. And we have that check. We are, it's amazing. It's outstanding. It's, uh, really some, it's really awe inspiring. So, um, I can't, uh, thank the P T O enough for being the facilitators of this, um, tremendous effort. But ultimately, it falls on the backs of our community, um, that, you know, the parents and the grandparents and anyone else that they're working to get to donate, um, to the causes that we have going on through the school year. So very proud of that, but definitely, uh, adds great deal of value to, um, the budget and the things that we need. So you just have. So you just approved in the consent agenda, a new um salary schedule uh to remain competitive. It brings the salary, uh, the starting salary from forty seven five to forty nine, three, seven, five, uh, which is uh competitive uh with the area surrounding. So thank you for that approval. Uh, that'll make it makes a a big difference in regards to uh staying competitive, aligning with the conversations that happened earlier, uh, showing value to those that are uh at the heart of everything that we do there and um as well as just uh meeting market needs. So we um are going to be, in addition to the um salary schedule for those existing salaries, we are going to be making some salary adjustments for um several select staff that um have been, if you recall in the last couple of years, there was um some teacher salary increase money that was given, but it was only given to new teachers and not to teachers that existed. And there's a, there's a small pocket of individuals that sort of were like looked over, you know, so they, there's a disparage in the number of years of service in which they work in regards to comparative. They would be uh ultimately better off quitting and being rehired. So uh we obviously don't want that. That seems ridiculous. So we're going to be making um some adjustments to better align those um in, in we are um we have a plan for that. We are um, uh, some of the differences in the, when you're looking at the budget, you may look at, um, if you're comparing it to last year, you may say, why is there uh a tremendous, an increase to I T budget versus what was that? Um, admin, one, we did some alignment, better alignments, better categorization of where the position should be. So um, if there were questions in relationship to that, the less you can let me know. Uh, creating, uh, and obviously the goal here in the highlights is creating a fund balance to continue to add to reserves. Uh, we, at the budget at this particular time, with the two point five percent revenue and what we anticipate revenues to be and the expenses we are looking to come out next year with a fund balance of about sixty thousand. So we have set aside that as well. So we're not millions away, but we're not supposed to. We're supposed to be providing services to children, but we need to um, you know, make sure that we plan. So some of the things um that are also happening in this is that we have a planned merit raise of one to three percent based on performance. Um, that is consistent um across the board, but it is um consistent in regards to our instructional staff. We do have to propose what the merit increases are, and it's based on a percentage of um how much is their evaluations, their regular evaluations versus some student um performance, uh, twenty five percent of that um student performance in regards to um how old the students outcomes in regards to scores and learning and all those things. So one to three percent is based on on performance. Uh, we budgeted for three percent across the board. So obviously, if anyone saw less than that, we'll a little bit of a budget. Um, you know, surplus. Uh, we are, the elimination of S R funding, uh funded positions, which were teacher aid positions um that existed for the last two years. They were grant funded, um, they have been eliminated. And they, they were planned to be eliminated. They were set as grant positions. They were set to end, and it's coming to an end. Uh, we, in response to the new um or the newer legislation uh that aligns with parental rights and all those things that are happening in the state of Florida, uh, there is a uh tremendous amount of diligence that needs to be put into place in regards to our media selection and our classroom books. Um, everything has to be vetted, everything needs to be, uh, have an approval process, and that has to be done through a certified media specialist. And so we are um bringing on a full-time media specialist to help take care of that uh this year to comply with those statutory requirements. And we are adding uh part-time teacher aides to um uh support math, uh, which has been um you know, something that they've been putting into place in regards to ensuring that not only are we providing interventions and remediation for E L A or reading, um, but that math becomes a priority as well. So we have put two part-time positions into that. Um, some of the planned capital outlets, um, capital, where did that came from? Capital projects are, we're going to update the lighting uh to L E D. Uh, that's going to happen outside in the courtyard, in the hallway areas. We're looking at doing either one classrooms in one building or a variety of classrooms. We're looking at options, basically kind of trickling it out across the next two years. Um, obviously, if we get a windfall of any type of funding that would support doing it all, we will may, maybe take care of it. Um, you know, sooner, but that the plan is to do some of this, of this particular year. Um, and look to do the remaining classrooms in the next year. We're looking at getting a different courtyard cover. We are soliciting um quotes right now, just to better make sure that we provide shade for that particular area. Uh, building maintenance needs are replaced, outdated, fuel station, uh, paint the classroom wall as needed, gutter cleanup. We have some cleanup in the front of the school, long gas tube, looking at some quotes to try to get that to look a little bit better. And then um what I wanted to provide you is with this budget, what is um our staffing um so that you know the numbers. And so we have full-time, our full-time instructional support, and these, these definitions are derivative of what they um from the state definitions in regards to those. So we have twenty eight full-time and fourteen instructional support positions. Uh, part-time, we have um only one uh part-time instructional support position. Uh, full-time um non-instructional, which would be the office staff, uh, capi- or cafeteria. These is non-instructional cafeteria, ask a student first, speak to language, all the little checks of eleven of full-time and thirteen. Our time for a total of sixty seven. So the requested action is for you to approve the budget, which is in your, your um commission pack. Any questions? Yes, that was Bianca was helping me with that, it's all separated.
Good.
New map.
New map.
Thank you, Pam.
I do, you, you brought up I T and that stuck out like a sore thumb. Where Amanda gonna be all right? What she's got in a budget?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as I T, like additional stuff that we have there, yes, we've got, we've gone through and we, we, we talked, we planned. We nipped in the bud and figured out what technology that we need and what um things happen. I think that um I have made it, um, I've shared my concerns in regards to um the level of support that I believe that the current provider is providing to us. Um, and so looking at potentially um for our managed services or network, looking at maybe for a new vendor, it's a tedious process. It's not easy. You go down this road and you find out, maybe it's not as bad as you think. So we're, we're keeping an open mind and, you know, looking at what is our possibilities um there. But yeah, I mean, we, we worked it all together. It was a, it was a combined effort, you know, with V P, um, Amanda, Brad and Al. Bianca was part of all this. We, we
Okay.
We did some serious uh planning and thinking.
Jaws chip. So long as you're short, then.
I'm as sure as I am unless.
And, and the other thing that I had brought up in the other is, I had made that commitment, we have uh Holly Hernandez's office, which is one of kind of portable ones, and she has a job that is of a sensitive nature that people don't need to hear. We need to really figure out how to get that enclosed. And that was why I brought up that maybe the eighty one thousand that we pay in the um, um, in the management fee. That might be right, that might not be right. I don't know if we are so self-funded over there that, is there any money to squeeze out of that? Or is it not being covered, or have we looked at that on what that eighty one thousand dollar covers?
You're saying she's in a portable right now?
She's not in a portable. What we did was an immediate center, we made, oh, we blocked off three rooms. Yeah, so um, you know, there, there's nothing from three quarter, you know, a quarter of the way up, same type of thing. So and it would, it would be um.
It's not just her office, so Deanna Reynolds is in there, she's a staffing specialist, which she handles all of the um I E D. Um, and all those, the five oh four meetings and those things, so.
All that noise just traveled over.
Does, it's. Yeah, well, specifically on Wednesdays, which are the days that we have meetings. Um, you, if you were to come through, you would see that everybody in that section all is wearing probably headphones for music because Deanna's on call all day and that's all we can hear.
Right, um, that's all I have on. I want to say again, kudos for the P T O, my goodness.
I know, it's really.
Just awesome.
You know, and, and I, it's, it's, it really is honestly like I, I, you, you hear people say they'll spend money on their grandchildren, and I know that for a fact because I their pets, right? But they spend on their kids. I mean, and the events that we do are kid-centered. You know, we're not peddling tchotchkes, we're not doing those things. We're having the booster lot fun run um and the mega blast. And so it's about supporting that. And so people are coming out because we're supporting the kids, um, engaging in physical activity and fun and, and, and friendship. And so it, you know, people.
And part of your capital.
It's a good thing.
Our, part of your capital projects, the courtyard cover, I thought it was like, it is since a long time ago.
Yeah. Tried to do something a little bit like we went and we uh bought some from Amazon and tried to do our own, but they just sag and then they look horrible, and then they're, you know, you're like, oh, so we are, we're trying to find some better material.
Correct.
A better um slope, looking at some options, had some vendors to see, but it definitely needs, we had umbrellas for years and we replaced those, you know, up until about four years ago, we were replacing them. Uh, we were putting a thousand dollars into replacing them every year.
Every year, yeah.
You know, and then bats are in them and, you know, you just get me started.
The town commission consider uh beginning of the school, the age of the school, I think it's how old is the school?
Twenty, twenty years.
So, no, our, our loan, our bond is just expiring for the repayment of that. But I know eventually, you know, school, a long, long range plan for the town, probably something to look at as far as being that we put significant amount of payments in the A C system here recently, and then some of the other improvements, we're in a portable, we're still in a portable, so.
Yeah, we're running the two port, the two portable.
Twenty years from now, still gonna be sitting there a thousand ago. So there, there are some costs that we all need to, we need to be looking at in the future. Figure out how, say, for those, if the town doesn't own the school and the property, or own the school building and the property. And oversee this school operations, I guess, as well.
Well, maybe next year, you can like a capital improvement project, five years or what?
Well, there is, mine is included in that other one out there. You, I put some of those. I, I not go to the extent of saying new buildings or any of that stuff. I um, I didn't put that on there because I, I don't, I don't have the information right now in regards to what you mean cost. And so in response to what you're saying, um, Vice Mayor, um, that's the conversation that Andy and I have kind of had in regards to that, those offices. It's like, is that the right answer? In a sense, it's needed, but like, do, what do we need to do the office differently? Like, it's so, it's, it's about like maybe coming together and talking about what needs to happen, you know, better for layout. Um that's where we left off. The quote that we got to, to enclose those offices was um around sixty thousand dollars. Um, so we, you know, the, the money's there in reserves, but we opted to not do that based on I I, I need more insight. I need, I need more support in regards to that, you know, type of decision, I guess, at this moment. And then it comes real fast and furious where we're talking about this in January, and the next thing you know, it's May. And then like, whoa, we need to do construction next week, you know what I mean, type of thing. So it thinks take a little bit longer. And I think that Mike Parker can agree with me on this. I'm like, how many years? We talked about the air conditioning. We're like, we're still close. No, we weren't, we were not that close. It just takes a while.
And that's where we'll end up with those portables too.
Yeah, I mean, there is definitely a decision that needs to be made in relationship to those, because those two are leased. And so we did only lease them initially for three years. Um, I do not think that we have the option to buy them out. Um, that was what they said originally, that they were meant to be returned to lease. I don't know if that's the case, because now we've had them a good six or seven years. Yeah, it is, yeah. It's going on almost like um nine years for the other one. Yeah, the other one that we were, you know, replaced the old clunkety.
How long you been there?
Um, this is my thirteenth school year. Yeah, thirteenth school year. Yes, oral history, you guys may need.
Thank you.
You're gonna want to know some of the things that I know. You're welcome, my guest.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to.
We need.
I'm sorry, yes. I'll make the motion to approve the uh charter school kind of budget.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye, okay.
I forgot. Thank you, Lee.
Andy and gang, what do you guys got tonight?
Not a whole lot, just uh if there's any buddy in the general public or any residents that would like to come and meet with me individually. The uh proposed budget that uh that was presented tonight at the work session. We're happy to sit down individually to uh go over, like to uh see, or have questions about um any time Monday through Friday. And appreciate uh that when you do and, and that. So it's gonna be good for the process. Anything from you?
Oh, tomorrow's the first walk of the talk Wednesday. I'll be over on the, it's five o'clock ago. You're not expecting a couple of good residents out there.
It's over here.
Provided that it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
If it rains, we'll not see. But uh.
Town of Oakland, Galaxis.
Very good, Gabby, anything?
Questions about the budget?
Parks and Center doing good?
We're um to be planning our next exhibit, which is uh Lake Apokka, telling the story of Lake Apokka. And there's a lot to tell. We're very excited and it's gonna um kind of be incorporated into our next uh live party.
Great.
Uh, you know, we were talking about, or Andy was talking about grants earlier. Um, so you might recall a couple of meetings ago, I uh told you all that we had been awarded the two million dollar grant and that we had an opportunity to ask for more funding uh to be associated with that. Uh, which we were subsequently turned down on. Uh, that, that didn't happen. So I turned around and literally uh applied for another one point five million from the state. Uh, and it'll be that, that, we won't hear anything about it till April or May of next year, but it's out there. So and then uh another grant related thing, the um uh, you know, the governor echoing our uh legislative uh request was kind of disappointing. So that same day I went on and I've now applied for, well, it's not, it's not officially submitted yet, but it will be uh next week. For that, so, and we updated to eight fifty, so. So we'll see.
Take all entry money.
At that one, we probably won't hear about that one until same time next year.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Elise?
Uh, Farmers Market tomorrow, ninety one, weather permitting.
Tomorrow?
I mean, Thursday.
Really messed me up.
Great, all right, well, uh, Sal, what do you have? Anything good? Brett?
Good. I'm good.
Get bonded.
The only thing I, I, yeah, that I was thinking about was um, you know, the uh A B issue, not write that up. How do you guys, I'll just pull the trigger and get it done. We can do that, that would be the very own must.
Let's move. Okay. What do we need to do for that? Yes. I can give you all the contacts.
I got.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of it with you tomorrow.
It is, it is pressure point.
It is, and you know, it, it's not fair. I, I don't, I, I speece this uh earlier tonight. How, how many people do you think join in the Zoom? And I, I'm sure there's something to read, right, find out. You know, because I think there's a lot of people out there that actually join in.
But right now, three.
Three, there's a lot of people out there. That uh they join in, but you know, you hear that all the time, like. So, yeah.
Um, I do want to mention though, if once the video is up on the website, it's a YouTube video, so you can actually turn on closed caption.
It helps, but if, if people are not speaking clearly and loudly, the closed captioning, it doesn't work either. So that's why I asked somebody to speak up tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Are we waiting for budget? And you know, like, I don't see the teachers sometimes have the things that just hang from their, their, you know, neck. That might be a temporary solution or something. And you know, while you're looking, I just want to bring that out there. I don't, I don't know, schoolwork or annoying or.
Get one of those light up portable speakers that you buy at Costco and. All right, Joseph, your turn.
Great, great productive meeting, everybody. Thank you.